Thank you. Reporting back from closed session, Mr. Splendario.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council convening closed session, received information and provided direction to staff. There's no report of action.
Thank you, sir. I would like to officially call the meeting to order for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 at 6:02 PM. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor, can I have you?
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino?
Here.
And Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Councilmember Lozano?
Here.
Mayor Vanderburg?
Here. Next is silent player, followed by the flag salute. Well done, everyone. Replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replaced Friday, April 7th at 9:00 AM and Saturday, April 8th at 9:00 AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. What is the Council's pleasure? Personally, I would like to switch item L1 and L2, keeping both on the agenda, but putting L2 first.
Mr. Mayor, which, what are we switching? Sorry.
Okay. No, that's, that's fine. That's perfectly fine. L1, L2 is ARPA Expenditure Plan Update and Fund Appropriations. Oh, I'm, you know what? I apologize. It's L2 and L3. Thank you, sir. So, does that make more sense?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I wrote my note incorrectly. Okay. If that's all for that, we'll move on to presentations. It doesn't look like we have any. So next is Public Comment. Madam Clerk.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The Public Comment section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted as noted above via the options listed on the first page of the agenda.
How many public comments do we have?
We have 12 public comments.
Okay. We anticipate this to be a longer meeting, so I'm going to limit each public comment to three minutes. And I personally apologize if that cuts you short in any way. So please try to consolidate your thoughts before you come up to the podium.
And just to note, I'll be doing it on my phone because our timer is...
Okay.
Okay, first is Missy Springmeyer.
Uh, thank you, Council. My name is Missy Springmeyer. I'm the president of the municipal council. I'm going to try to speed through this. I have it down to four minutes, nine seconds. So, as the council is well aware, our organization has been working towards creating wealthy, fair access to the city on buildings, whatever. As the council is well aware, as of March 10th, no longer have had access to it. Uh, we were watching the last town community, but we know that the council has tasked the commission with helping resolve the issues. He's tired of the process, and the council is seeing the issues. Um, the commission has already reached out to us, and we feel confident that we'll be able to move forward with the first solution that we've been through.
Thank you. Yes, she's good. She's checking. That's okay. It's not your fault. Is there, what is the next speaker? Who is?
I have a couple of concerns. One of them is, I noticed on the last poll that we had online about opening up dispensaries in Galt. Um, to give you an idea, I've, I have two things going on already. I just got rear-ended by a guy in Walmart, stoned out of his mind, which the PD had to go out twice, and they don't have time to deal with that sort of thing. Number two, when I open my windows at night to get the Delta breeze in the summer, I've had neighbors smoking their skunk bud, and it's blowing into my house where my grandkid is. And I've had to go out and confront the neighbors, and this creates a rather volatile situation, as I'm sure the PD will tell you. Um, I've also had a girlfriend who, may she rest in peace, who passed on, who I had to get CDB for. And I had to go down to the Stockton dispensaries to ease her discomfort. And I saw the kind of people that hang out around those dispensaries. And this is not the kind of people you want to encourage to come to Galt, let me tell you. So, that, that's something that we really need to think about, because when I see that poll going out, I'm just hope that, I know that we're not encouraging it, but the reality is, I know the PD's not going to get any more bodies if this thing passes to enforce it, let alone, I know the CHP can't even get people out of the academy right now. But I'm sure Galt's having a similar problem. So, this is a serious concern here. If, if Galt's going to go this direction, I can tell you right now that people like me that can, are going to contribute to the community, we're going to want to raise our kids somewhere else. We're going to want to bring our grandkids to a different home. So, that's, that's one concern I want you guys to be aware of. The other concern that I see going on, and I'm sure a lot of us are aware of it, is I'm seeing more and more homeless start to show up. And we need to raise awareness in the community to keep our eyes open, because I just talked to the gentleman over there at Rite Aid on the corner of Twin Cities and Carillion. And he said, yeah, he said, I was talking to one of them, and they were put on a bus. Now, when I heard this, it rings a bell, because my mother lives in Lodi, and she's actually retired teacher. She knows a lot of people in Lodi. And the word on Lodi is people in Manteca rounded them up and put them on a bus and sent them over to Lodi. So, maybe we need to get a little task force or something together, or investigation, people assigned to investigate this sort of thing. So if we find out that they are shipping them here on the buses, that we raise some funds in the community here, put them back on the bus, and send them right back to where they came from. Okay? And I don't have anything against it, but I don't want to see this town, these guys, the Planning Commission has done a great job at trying to keep this town in good shape. And we want to make sure that they have the support from the City Council here to make sure they can keep pushing things in that direction. So, that, that's all I have to say. But we need to raise, I think we need to raise awareness in the community that this is going on.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, oh, it's working. Um, hi, I am Andrea Johnson. Um, you all know me. Um, I'm coming today as a private citizen, not the chair on commission. Um, after me, there will be some speakers coming up who are scared to death to speak about a senior matter that is going on here in Galt. Um, they do not want their pictures taken or their name mentioned in the paper, please. Um, it's, it's quite sad when we have to come to you like this because of what they're going through. So as they're speaking, please put yourself in their shoes as a senior, or maybe put somebody you love, a parent, a grandparent, a neighbor, somebody. So when they're up here speaking, you guys can really feel what they're feeling and, and how they're scared to even be up here speaking about this subject. I'm actually very proud of them for coming and speaking. None of them really wanted to because they're scared of loss of placement, of repercussions that could come on them because of their housing situation. Um, you know, we always talk about quality of life. Well, let's actually put, think about their quality of life, the seniors. They're, they're just as important. We, none of us would be here without seniors. And our town wouldn't be our town without seniors building it. So please keep that in mind also. All right?
Thank you.
Hello. Um, I live in Galt Place. I also am the housekeeper, or was the housekeeper there until I fell off a ladder. But there's a lot of, um, illegal things, and we have black mold throughout the building. And I've been telling her over and over, we gotta, it's gonna spread, you know? I already know how fast it spreads. But nothing's been done about it. And, uh, there's a lot of people being mistreated. They call the corp, and the corp talks to them inappropriately, using foul language. And I've even had to stop and take somebody's blood pressure before, because they are just not being treated right over there. And the rent raise is, we think is illegal. But we just don't know the laws, you know? So we need somebody to look into it for us. Yeah, and we have, we've had quite a few people that they've found dead in their apartments. And one of them, the parents had been there trying to get a hold of somebody to get in and do a welfare check. But the manager has the recorder off, doesn't, hasn't been in the office in months, and doesn't answer the phone. So they came back the next day with the police department and found their daughter and they're dead. And then she's not the first one. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
I also live at Galt Place, and I just wanted to let you guys know that, um, we have people there that are on Section 8, like myself. And since the pandemic and stuff, we've been given rent raising letters. First, it was $10, then it's $20, now it's $50. And we have year leases, and so we're not month to month. And as far as I am under the understanding that our building is a LIHTC, which gives incentives for them to build and provide housing for low-income seniors. And, and so, um, our rents are not low, for one thing. Another thing, our rent comes with amenities that were provided, that were, you know, given to us when we rented it. So that's the main reason we rented. Anyway, we're supposed to get, um, all-access Wi-Fi and computers and, and printers in our classroom. We're supposed to have bathrooms to use. We also have a community room that we're not allowed to use, but she rents it out to other people for private events. And, um, we don't get to use that at all. We can't go in there. And the churches bring us food, but she recently said that we were given too much of that food, so she put signs on the bins that have apples and potatoes that say we could only have five or, or four of each, and that we're on camera, you know? So we're being videotaped. And we also have a tenant that has a Wi-Fi, I mean, a spy camera in the hallway, and she records us audio and video 24/7. And she makes up her own problems to send to the, um, the manager to get us in trouble and stuff. And so, we just, you know, we feel like we're being gouged, for one thing, because our rent goes up so much. And people like us that are seniors, we don't get very much money. So a lot of us, after we pay our rent, we can't even afford to eat. So I just wanted you guys to possibly look into it for us, please. Thank you.
Thank you. We will look into it.
Galt Place Tenant 1. Senior Concerns, number 10.
Good evening, Council. I have to read for my report due to memory defects. I've survived eight strokes, and I'm at the age of 30, uh, age of 69. So I'm in a disabled status. I can't work. And so all I got is coming in is my disability. I could be one step away from homelessness. I mean, that's how close, because we have no backup. It's something I experienced before being homeless, and I don't want to be homeless again. Some tenants have left our building to live with their children because they can't afford their rent. And so they had to go, go back and live with their kids. The ones that stay in the building right now, we're on our own. Lucky we have Sunshine Food Pantry. They come to our building once a week with food. With inflation and food price hikes of 25%, senior dollars have lost 35% on each dollar. The question arises during the pandemic, were we subject to rent increases during the years 2020, 2021, and 2022? And what are the tax breaks status of low-income housing as they, they were, come before state regulations because some of us are subsidized, and it's low-income housing, and it's based on, upon our income? And is there a formula of the percentage of income, the amount of rent being charged? I was wondering, during the Planning Commission, when these buildings were built 10 years ago, did they have a specific condition in regards to the project on, on the rent they were going to charge and, and how much they were going to increase it? And you can compare that to the new project that are going to be built. Are there specific conditions on them? Because they're guaranteeing only 30% of our income, not 60% of our income. And eating out, eating out depends on winning gift cards at the bingo game that the Commission on Aging provides. Otherwise, a lot of us can't go out and eat. So basically, I get $1,153 a month. Out of that, they take 649 rent. And then basically, that leaves me with $109. So in 2020, they raised the rent 3%, which was $20. In '21, they raised it 34, no, uh, 3, 3.4%, which was $20. And in '22, they raised it, uh, 3% of $20. But in '23, they raised it 9%, which is $54. And I, I want to know, you know, what conditions there was. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Resident 4.
Good evening, sir. Um, I too, live at Galt Place. I've been there almost 12 years, uh, 11 and a half years. Um, I've seen them grow and grow, these problems. Carpet needs replacing, the paint falls apart, and they put the wrong paint back on. They take away parking spaces. The, we have been without hot water on more than one occasion. Um, the first time, they told us, uh, well, we have to wait for a part. In my mind, if you're in business, you better be able to go to get your part like that. They said, well, the boiler needs to, whatever. We were 10 days with no hot water. The boiler ran out two weeks ago, and we were told that the fire department issued that and that they had capped it off. Fortunately, this time, they gave us warm water, kind of. I don't know how you can do that if the fire department capped it off, but that's what we were told. We now have hot water. But it was another, that was another thing. We had to wait for a part. And we had to wait for the fire department to come and make sure that it was okay. Um, when we have meetings in the past, there was a person, the director in charge was Linda Roland. And we were submitted to literally being yelled at over and over again. They were nothing but children that, um, were asking too much. We asked for things that are common, you know, fix the carpet or whatever. Um, we have different rules for different tenants, and that doesn't seem to be kosher, I guess. Um, they, it, we, when we moved in, it was such a beautiful, beautiful place. And it has gone, there has been no improvements, no upkeep, no nothing. They keep telling us, oh, there's no money for this, there's no money for that. There's no money for vegetation, whatever that's called, landscaping. Um, and it looks like it's just becoming a slum. If you go out into our garage, the ceiling is full of watermarks, mold as you travel down, big black patches of mold. Um, the, when one lady takes a shower, she washes off the cars down in the garage, but they haven't fixed it yet. Um, they don't handle unassisted, excuse me, what is the name for it? Not unassisted, unaccompanied deaths. They do not handle them right. Um, Gail talked about that, about people finding people dead in their house. We, for the most part, have nobody in town. We have, all our kids are gone away, or we, whatever. And we are on our, just, you know, we could lay for days. One man, uh, lay there for a week. They found him on five days, and they were, they were told to spray Lysol. The other lady was just recent, we just, we really loved her, and she was found after three days. That's, that's just wrong. It's, anyway. And then to not have any improvements and be told you can't have a plant outside your door, you can't have a, you know, whatever, to make it look like home. Right now, it looks like an asylum. And that's pretty much how we feel. And I'm here to just say, please help us. Somebody listen, somebody help us. We don't know where to go. We don't know where you go for a sheer complaint, because our landlord appears to be the head of that or something, from what we're told. We don't know where to go to find out. How do we get help? How can we find out? Are these raises legal, or are they not? Because we are subsidized, and it's our understanding they can't do that. But we might be understanding it wrong. So please, please hear us, and please help us to find out these answers and to make this right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Johnson, would you make sure you follow up with the city and the council, please, on all of these items?
Bob Bailey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, and city staff. Um, what you've been hearing thus far about the Galt Place is, in my, to my estimation, the tip of the iceberg. I addressed this issue with you, uh, several meetings ago, for, under the public comments portion of the City Council meeting. And of course, I'm limited, I was limited to five minutes. So I followed it up with each of you with a, with the total letter or the writing that I had. each of you with a, with the total letter or the writing that I had, I was going to present during that five minutes and couldn't. In any case, I have at home, this has been going on for a couple of years, at least for a couple of years, and Galt Place is not the only place. There are two other places that house or that provide homes, in quotation marks, for our senior citizens and they are, there's a lot of allegations, and I emphasize allegations, of elder abuse, of, of elder neglect, of raising rent by not going through the proper procedures, that is, you have to go to HUD. If you're, if you're subsidized by HUD, the rent increase letter should come from HUD, not from the local manager. Or same thing with Section Eight, they get theirs directly from the local manager and they say, your rent's going up fifty dollars, but we don't know if they're going, if, what they're reporting to HUD, that, you know, that the rent is only twenty-five dollars. So, there's always the possibility of fraud. So, I'm, I'm trying to bring this up to you guys because as you can hear in the voices of the seniors that are here, they are frustrated, they're at the verge of breakdown. I mean, I've had seniors come to me as a private person and I have related to some of you, some of those stories and I actually, I'm not usually a guy to beg, but I'm begging you, listen to your senior citizens and get somebody in power to investigate all of these senior complexes we have here in Galt. If there's three of them out of six right now, or seven, there's got to be, there's probably more that have similar problems and they feel at loss, they feel neglected by their city representatives because they are not being listened to. I talked recently with the county supervisor, Pat Hume, about the same subject matters and he indicated that he would have a staff person get in touch with me and it hasn't happened yet. So, we're, we're hitting our heads against the walls and I'm ready to go public, I'm ready to go to the, use the media on the local and on the regional level to bring this all out in the open. If there's no, if there are, if there's, if there are no facts to substantiate the allegations, that's fine and I'd be glad if that were to happen, but I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Belinda Ellis.
I'm here, I just want to give a, a short update on the Galt Cemetery. As I mentioned previously, we suffered a great deal of damage in the storms of the New Year and we have been in contact with FEMA and so I want to thank you all for taking Mr. Lozano seriously and sending Mr. Farmer came out to our FEMA meeting last week and so he is aware that we are moving forward. I mention this because I'm beginning to receive complaints about the condition of the cemetery and I imagine it's just a matter of time before you all receive complaints about the condition of the cemetery. We are truly doing the very best that we can. We've sustained a great deal of damage and there's a lot we cannot do as we're still waiting for FEMA. We have to be able to show FEMA the damage. We have been able to move all of our debris and it looks as though we are going to be able to recover the costs that we put out for removing the debris. So, that's positive. The ground is too wet to really get any equipment in there to do anything. We, we sink equipment on a regular basis at the cemetery in Galt and also at the one at Hicksville on Arno Road. We finally have water, we have a bathroom. Personally, I find that wonderful. We continue to have services in our veterans area. I know that is difficult for people. Hopefully, when the cemetery gets back in place, we're going to be able to have services at the graveside, but for the foreseeable future, we cannot. It's also an issue that we are only open limited hours. For safety reasons, we're only open from nine to three. That gives us an hour before we go home to have, to get people out of the cemetery so we can close the gates. I understand it is a holiday and many people want to come and visit the cemetery on a holiday, so we are being opened on this Saturday before Easter from nine to twelve. We'll have staff there so people can come and visit. We'll also open the Saturday before Mother's Day and the Saturday before Father's Day. So, we're trying to accommodate those who cannot get out during the week. Lastly, water, it's an issue. When the rains stop, I'm not going to have any water to water the cemetery. We are looking into rain for rent or one of those procedures where we actually have people bring in water that we hook up to our pumps. So, it's sprinklers for rent is what we're looking at. I am working on a, on a spreadsheet showing the difference. It is, it is less money to purchase our own equipment than to rent it. So, we can rent for about two months for the cost of purchasing a system so that we can water the cemetery. So, I'm coming to you as a City Council, just looking for ideas. Anywhere else I can go, anything else that you think we ought to be looking into, any grants, anything like that that you might have. I'm just, time is up, but if you have any ideas to help me, I would be grateful.
Thank you.
Greg Davidson.
Hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Council members and City staff. I'll try and make my remarks brief, save you some time. I'd like to thank the city and especially Parks and Recreation for a wonderful Saturday market that they put on this past week. I noticed a lot of people that I hadn't seen from around town, so I'm thinking that we got a lot of people from out of town and that was a very good thing. It was very well organized, it was clean, there was a lot of different choices for the people who came down and enjoyed the nice weather. Secondly, I hadn't planned on this, but I feel that I must answer the prior gentleman who spoke about the cannabis dispensaries. The cannabis dispensaries that I've been to in Stockton had no homeless people hanging around, were clean, were safe. There was nobody hanging around, there were people going in and out, purchasing legal products, one-third of which no longer have an intoxicating effect. They're all based on CBD used for pain, PTSD, migraines, pain from menstrual cramps, various other things. So, I'm, I'm not sure that the person that he had the bad experience with was under the influence of cannabis as well. My experience is that that person probably was either mentally ill or under the influence of hard drugs. Thank you very much and thank you again for a great, great city market.
Thank you, sir.
Graham Brosman.
Last council meeting, I heard after the fact that you spoke about the traffic on Carillion and proposed different stop signs, four-way stop signs or, or roundabouts, whatever you're deciding. I wish I'd come and I actually asked my spouse if he wanted me to come with him and he's like, no, 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 I don't, nothing's going on, we're fine. He didn't want me here. Anyway, years ago, and I'm talking fifteen years ago, my children went to school on that side of town and I drove from Lake Canyon Elementary School to the middle school. This was before the high school was there. It was dangerous then and there's more drivers on the road now. There's teenagers drivers going to the high school. The worst intersection in that whole street is Lake Canyon and Carillion. It's a blind spot. Sorry, that's my son calling. It's a blind spot. It's a blind spot and you cannot see. You cannot see small children crossing the street and it would be an equivalent, it's a four-lane street, two on each side. We don't have crosswalks like that anywhere else in town where there are four drivers wide. They don't slow down, they don't stop, and they don't see small children crossing the street. I have seen children almost get run over by cars just trying to cross the street. And I can tell you, as a parent, years ago, someone asked me, and it was a council member years ago, is your child going to participate in the bicycle rodeo that's happening down Carillion? I said, not on your life. I said, that is the most dangerous street in this town because no one slows down. No one does. And you put an extra stop sign over by Vintage Oak, I believe it is, on Carillion? But you did that because of the housing on the other side, I'm assuming, for the kids who are living on that side who go to the other elementary school. But you're not doing it for Lake Canyon's elementary school. So, why is that? It's a dangerous area. I've seen one other stop sign go in and that's when a child got hit on a bicycle from someone going from Walnut to Carillion and then immediately a stop sign got put in. Do we have to have a child get hit by a car or die before that happens? And I think you really should strongly think about doing that. I know there's different regulations about where you can put stop signs, but people come off of Twin Cities down Carillion and they don't slow down. And that's what I've, I've seen, witnessed, and almost witnessed kids getting hit. So, please think about putting a stop sign, a four-way stop sign right there at Carillion and Lake Canyon. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, ma'am. For your information, we did have a lengthy discussion on that topic and you can view the council meeting at Metro 14 on YouTube.
I know you had one because I might have to talk about it when he got back. I just wish he didn't know about it because he wasn't the one taking kids to school. You know, he's not there at school time when kids are going to school in the morning or kids are being picked up in the afternoon. From two to three, it's a danger zone in the afternoon because now you have high school kids on the, on the road too. So, it's dangerous.
Have one more?
Thank you.
Sean Farmer.
Just for the education of the council and the public, council members are entitled to public comment as long as they are speaking in their own personal capacity, not as a council member or on behalf of the city.
Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, I know this is a little unorthodox for those of you in the audience to see this and obviously, first time I ever did this, but I decided this evening to speak as a private citizen on behalf of a family member who also lives at Galt Place. Some of the things that I, I heard from the other tenants, although unfounded at this point, you can't ignore over a dozen or more people telling you these things. This thing, these things have been going on for a long time. I've witnessed some of these things firsthand. I can tell you, it's, it's absolutely appalling to hear about family members not being able to get into a building to check on a loved one who doesn't answer their phone and to find them deceased. I personally had my wife in the building, trying to check on our loved one and they were not allowed in the building and they finally gained access through another tenant who had the key fob to let them in because the manager doesn't answer the phone or is not present. They witnessed a very foul stench in the building, which was overwhelming in the hallways. Come to find out, it was a deceased tenant who had been there for a week. There is a story of a gentleman who's occupying a apartment that was previously occupied, who, a gentleman who committed suicide, apparently in a very dramatic fashion. And we were told that the drywall was patched and they replaced the carpet and that's about it. And there is still smell in the apartment. I would like to think that they had proper people come in and do the proper procedures to clean such a space, for all of these spaces, actually, but I would probably think it's not. I personally, my wife and I had to act on behalf of my, our loved one for a rent increase that was done illegally. They are subsidized rent and they circumvented that process. We had to speak to Sacramento Housing Authority or the agency and we were on the phone with them. It was very difficult. I can see why these seniors and these folks, it's a daunting task for them to contact these people because it, it's very difficult and these rent increases are, they're getting letters, they're getting, they're being threatened. It's, it's absolutely elder abuse, completely, in fact. It might not, some things may not be illegal in what they're doing, but they're, it's psychological abuse on these people. They're getting things like remotes taken away from our TV and saying, well, you guys don't know how to use the remotes because you're seniors, so we're just going to take the TV away because you don't need to use it. Or you can't use the rec room, which you're entitled to by your rent, but we'll rent it out to, to other organizations in town for profit. I mean, there might be mold in there, we don't know if there is, or the floors buckled or whatever safety reason that they're claiming, but if so, then why is it safe for these organizations to use this room? We've had people get locked out of the building because they changed key fobs. So, I would like to wrap up real quick. I would implore you as elected officials, these citizens, to please act on their behalf. That goes for staff included. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that was the last.
Correct.
Thank you. Next, thank you for all the comments, it is appreciated. Reports to City Council, by City Council members on regional boards, commissions, and/or committees, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended and spoke at the State of the City at Brewster and organized by Chamber. Thank you for the Chamber. Many community members, business owner, and staff members were in the attendance to learn more about the recent progress and happening of the city. There were many presentation, the presentation from our mayor Bennerberg, presentation from our chief of police, Brian Kalanowski, and we also have on that been a presentation for consumers of fire, CSD, and also from this part. Thank you for everybody joining that event. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Popinow.
On March 29th, I, as part of the Board of Directors of the Sacramento Cable Consortium and the Sacramento Educational Cable Consortium, I presented, I was able to present the awards for the Student Education Video Awards. And it was kind of interesting the way we did it, wasn't really a, I think it's leftover from COVID and it worked pretty good. We were at Galt High and we presented the awards, myself and the teacher there, to all the recipients for educational videos for the county through, was it, second grade through high school? It was pretty neat. And then, on April, oh, and then I also had the, the Air Quality Board meeting, which generally was a lot of housekeeping business. However, it was one thing of interest, on April 11th, for anybody who's interested in electronic or electric vehicle fleets, from nine to 11 at the Pepsi Plant on Reese Road up in South Sacramento, they actually just got a fleet of 21 Tesla semi trucks. So, I might try and see if I can take some time off work and go check that out. It sounded like a pretty interesting event. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Only had one thing I wanted to report on and it was just to follow up on what Belinda Ellis spoke about. I went out and met with her and members of FEMA that flew in from out of town, out of state, actually. And it was, I just, very eye-opening experience. The cemetery is in very poor condition. I was shocked when we took a tour of it that some of the grave sites that are actually been affected are my own family members. There's literally uplifted soil just a couple of feet from their headstones. Our recent CAPS member who had passed away, Mr. Conick, his headstone is completely upended and laying down. Was really sad to see that. Obviously, the plan is to repair that, but the ground is so bad, they're not able to get heavy equipment in there. But to see people that you know are new in their, their, their final place of rest was very sad. But what I would like to say to the people is please have patience, they're doing what they can, they're trying to get financial assistance through FEMA, it's a process. And... And hopefully, I know it's our only cemetery, and a lot of people want to go visit loved ones, but you have to be patient with the staff. Please don't let anger get in the way of, you know, your feelings, because they're doing what they can, and hopefully, their funding will come through, and they'll be up and running as soon as they can. But thank you, Belinda, for going to bat for the cemetery, and hopefully, it all works out for you guys. So with that, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, just briefly, I have a land use, national resource, CACOG meeting on Thursday, the 6th, I'll report on. I'm also gonna be attending the California League of Cities Leaders Summit, April 12th through the 14th, and that's in Sacramento. There will be doing advocacy on behalf of Cal Cities, the capital. There's breakout sessions, just a few to note, preventing and reducing homelessness. So they're obviously talk about how cities can do that, strategies for local governments to prevent organized retail crime. Not that we have that here, but it would be nice to hear a little bit about that in the prevention piece. And then best practices in addressing illegal dumping, Surplus Land Act and its housing and land use impacts. And then another one that kind of caught my head was school safety partnerships, and so what we can do with that, and I'll report back out on that. And that, I have some other things, but I think it's more for under-council comments. I'll save them for then.
Thank you, sir. I gave the State of the City address. I won't reiterate what Vice Mayor stated, but I would say it was very nice to see that Congresswoman Matsui's two representatives from her office came down to hear the address, and it was, I was glad to see that they showed interest, and they actually asked for the slideshow from staff to help give themselves a better understanding of the city and the direction we're headed, so that was nice to see. Last night, I attended the Youth Commission here. There was a lengthy explanation discussion about the homeless problem in Galt and how difficult it can be. It was, there was good questions, and it was, I think it was quite eye-opening for the Youth Commission. I also reminded those that are soon to leave the Commission that when they go to college, there's a triangle of you get sleep, good grades, or fun, but you only get to pick two corners of the triangle. So hopefully, they pay attention to that, because it's simple and very accurate. So with that, we'll move on to information and consent calendar. It is recommended that items one and two be acted on simultaneously unless separately, separate discussion and/or action is requested by the council member. Is there any action by the council? No. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
If there's no action and no public comment, I would like to see a motion to receive the file warrants for period ending in March 2022, March 22, 2023, minutes of the regular meeting from March 21st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Lozano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
You.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, everyone. Next is scheduled matters of public hearing, which doesn't appear to be any. Then we, so we'll move on to a regular calendar. The city manager's office, L1, Key to the City Program, Mr. Hines.
Yes, the Key to the City Program was brought to council by Councilmember Lozano, and it is basically a citizen recognition program and allows council to take nominations from the, from the community and other interested parties for folks who are, have been exemplary as Galt residents, and it is submitted to council for discussion.
Thank you, sir. Does council have any comment?
I just have a quick statement. I just, we brought this up a couple months ago, and I appreciate the, my colleagues for allowing it to come back. I think it's a, I think we do a lot to acknowledge our citizens here in town. The character coalition does a good job of identifying people. This, this program would be a little different in that it would really focus on four areas, and it's in the staff report, but a Galt resident with significance, accomplishments in military service, a Galt resident reaching the age of 100 years old, a person who performed an act of heroism while in the city limits, and then a dignitary or celebrity visiting the city is, who this would be focused on. We could also entertain other nominations that would come to the council for discussion. Again, this is just a way to acknowledge some of our citizens who have kind of gone above and beyond. These do not have to be given only to people who are alive. They can be given to families of folks who have passed. And some that come to mind as an example is maybe Officer Ton being awarded one, and then Officer Graywall, and, and others who have, who have made the ultimate sacrifice here in the city. And so I would ask my colleagues to please comment on this, and I appreciate the mayor providing some valuable feedback during this process. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other council members?
Yeah. I thank Councilman Lozano for bringing the idea, and it coincides with something currently going on. Back in 2020, we had a assault, attempted sexual assault at Lake Canyon Park, and a good citizen jumped in, took physical action to rescue the victim and detain the suspect. I'm not gonna go in his name right now, because I didn't have a chance to clear it with him first to mention it in this forum. However, on the 28th, he'll be receiving an outstanding citizen award from the district attorney downtown at the Board of Supervisors chambers. And that just, you know, hit me in the same time that this idea came up. You know, that's certainly something right in there. We have those things that happen, and it's a good way to recognize people that do stuff like that. So I'm all in favor of the program.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think it's a great program. I, I think anytime we can have something that can, you know, honor somebody special for certain reasons, that we could take the time to do that. I think it's very community-oriented. I, I think I'd like to see, though, I know these parameters are just kind of a framework, but maybe, I can't, off the top of my head, think of something else that could fall, but maybe if there's something else that arises and somebody comes and says, hey, I think this person deserves a key to the city, and they don't squarely fit into that criteria, I don't know if there's any flexibility that the council, what are your thoughts, Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I'll just point to the last part of the staff report, and actually, there's a draft of it. It says, request for key to, to be presented in recognition of unique circumstances other than those listed above, which is what I had mentioned, and deemed appropriate by staff will be considered by the city council on a case-by-case basis at a council meeting. So all requests received should be submitted through the city manager's office. So yeah, we do have flexibility. You know, it doesn't always have to fall within that specific rank, but I think the mayor, in our emails back and forth, probably a good point, we, we want to make sure that it's certainly something that's outstanding and, and outside of the norm, where, you know, we consider whether or not we provide a proclamation or, or another certificate first, and then the key to the city being kind of the highest honor. And so just kind of keeping that in mind. But yeah, we do have flexibility.
Absolutely, and I would agree with that. We don't want to water down the significance of that, for sure. So I think that that's, there's other things that could be taken before we would get to that point, but yeah, I just wanted to make sure. And thank you for pointing that out. I didn't actually see that part. So yeah, I would think I would, I would support this program, and, and so I don't have any issues with it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I agree with everyone for the most part. Only thing I would like to point out personally is that in the last or second to the last paragraph, it states, as deemed necessary by staff. I think I would like to see that or by any council member. It also stand, I don't mean to, you know, it's not trying to pick on anyone, for sure, but maybe I'm just reading it incorrectly or interpreting it, you know, incorrectly, but it should be submitted through city manager. I, I don't think that you would ever be biased, but I don't think it should all be focused through a single individual. I think, you know, if, if the city council or one of the members of the city council became aware of a unique situation, you know, it, it could certainly be presented to the cities. And legally, is that the same, and the reason I ask that, legally, is it the same as a proclamation where this is not necessarily an agendized item that has to be presented in public 72 hours in advance? And that's partly why I bring it up.
If we're not doing the key to the city at a council meeting, then yeah, I suppose it could be done offline, but I think the assumption would be presented at a council meeting, and as part of a proclamation or presentation, it would have to be agendized.
Right.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Even if it's a ceremonial item, it still has to be agendized.
Maybe I, maybe I misframed that. A proclamation was brought up a couple of times by Councilmember Papinow. That was not through staff. I feel that this should have the same leeway.
And that's the council's discretion.
Right. Does that make sense?
That's our expectation. Now, it says that it would be submitted through the city manager. That doesn't mean that the five of you can't come to us saying, I need this particular person recognized, because the proclamation and all of the sort of the details around the presentation are done by staff, because all the proclamations are done in the city clerk's office. So if folks come to us directly, I will let you know that this name is in the hopper and for your consideration. If folks come to you directly, I would expect the same sort of two-way communication, because if council decides to move on the proclamation, again, our clerk has to develop that document.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is a good program. I'm agree with that program. This is a better, good way to recognize our citizen, like in somebody 100-year age, military, you know, that's a good thing, and I will support that. Thank you for, Councilmember Lozano, bringing that to the council. The only one thing, I don't know, we might be going, say, while in the city limit, you know, then sometimes celebrity, we are very outskirts of Sacramento metropolitan. If there's a possibility, if somebody come to, they cannot come here in the city limit, and there is somebody dignitary or celebrity, we should be able to go through, through that Key to the City program if possible.
If somebody from Wilton, you know, did something heroic, would it be any less significant to, you know, they did it in town, would it any, be any less significant to honor him in an appropriate fashion? So I, I agree with that sentiment.
Thank you. Thank you, and I will support that. That's a good program. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's, and no further discussion, do I have a motion?
Public comment.
Thank you, sir. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
So do I have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Papinow. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Next will be item L3, because we're gonna skip L2 as per my request. Subject discussed: Foundation of the City Council Ad-Hoc Committee pertaining to the Galt District Chamber of Commerce request for $500,000 in a one-time ARPA funds and minimum of $100,000 or transit occupancy tax revenue annually for the Visit Galt Initiative. Mr. Hines.
This is really a council discussion, and so I'll turn it back to the council.
Thank you, sir.
And if I may add, the way we ended this discussion was the possibility of having an ad hoc committee formed to vet this particular proposal.
Correct. Is there any comment by council?
Yeah, it was my idea, so to bring this on the agenda, so I'll kind of start it off. The request from the chamber for $500,000, I think sparked a good conversation, as has their evolving plan, or, you know, outlined for how a visitor's center, bureau, Visit Galt program would work. And I, since that discussion started, I've heard from people on various sides and various views of it, some saying that we're at risk of haphazardly giving taxpayer money to a private organization without expectations or any kind of proper arrangement, oversight by us, that kind of thing. You know, no, no requirements as were put on businesses when they had to apply specifically and show some documentation and so forth. Other things that have come forward are alternative models, visitor center, bureau center, different operations, whether it be the, the physical center, the cooperative relationship between the various government, local government entities, and Chamber of Commerce, whether the chamber is doing work as an agent of the city, or if they're operating under an MOU with individual responsibilities. So I think, you know, this discussion that it sparked is good, and that's why I brought forward the idea of putting together an ad hoc committee, you know, as we've done before, two council members. I believe in this case would be appropriate for Amy Mendez to be the admin, because she's the, she's in charge of that, marketing the city, basically. And then a couple members appointed by the Chamber of Commerce. That's my, my idea, and I certainly, bringing it up, would be willing to volunteer to serve on such a committee.
Any other council members? Mr. Vice Mayor, Sandu.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a few comments. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Papinow, he bring that idea to the council. And so I would like to little bit mention is the same thing, but the, I believe that chamber asking, there is a two component on that they request. One they requested, they asking lump sum money in order to chamber stay whatever their wishes are, whatever they helping to whole community and also business, too. And the other thing, they want to be some kind of fund in the long term, they can help them. You know, there is one first component I mentioned, that's why like in some money they requesting, and what we have, it, it up to all my colleagues. And that component, I believe again, does not need for ad hoc. When we add the ad hoc committee, it can take a time. We have to make the ad hoc committee, then it's go through the, then it's go through the MOU, whatever, then it's go the both side, their attorney going to review it, it can take a time. And I, I do understand we, that's why I believe in the second component, when there's any money going to long term, from general fund or from TOT, that money should be very detailed, should be, there should be some kind of MOU where that money chamber going to use in the future. And this is the taxpayer money, is, I want to make sure my, it's go through, and, and our staff, attorney review that, and same thing, chamber, their attorney can review, they don't want to, you know, come up some kind of agreement, it does not work with both way. And this is a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Papinow, and that's it so far. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other council members? Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, thank you for, for the moment to speak. I appreciate Councilman Papinow bringing this forward. I just want to point out that I think that it's important that the city, and I've said this before, and I think the chamber president's tired of hearing me say it, but I think it's time for the city to invest in economic development here, and, and part of that is a formalized partnership with the chamber. And part of that is a formalized partnership with the chamber. With, you know, checks and balances along the way so that we're both equally doing our part. And I said this in the last meeting, I don't know that ARPA money in and of itself is going to solve that problem. I believe that general fund, TOT, whatever it is, long-term will. I too have been contacted by several people, and I had a great conversation with the chamber president this afternoon about, you know, there are a lot of people on all ends of this. I had a meeting today with somebody that said, what are you doing considering half a million dollars for the chamber? And I've also heard tons of emails this afternoon, after we got off the phone, from people saying it's a great idea. So we certainly have to balance it. And I think that doing, balancing that and coming up with a legitimate, long-term program on both sides, this, this environment is not the right environment to do that. And so I think, again, Councilman Papinell for bringing it forward, I think it's important. I don't think this is something that's going to take a long time. I don't know everybody's schedule, but I can't imagine it would be anything similar than to the ad hoc committee Councilman Farmer and I were on last year. I can't imagine that. But I certainly think that we need to do some due diligence on our end and make sure that, that we're doing a program that's going to be good for the entire city long-term. And so those are just my comments. I appreciate it.
Councilman Farmer?
Go ahead, if you have a comment.
I was actually going to ask for public comment if you'd like a few minutes. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
I just want clarification on a couple. We do have one, Greg Davidson, you said L3, which is the ad hoc, but you wrote ARPA.
Ad hoc.
Pardon me?
It's ad hoc.
It's ad hoc, okay. And then Chris, you wrote L3.
Yes, sir.
So ARPA or this one?
ARPA.
You want ARPA.
Yes.
L2.
If you want to talk about what we've been discussing, that's L3. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening again. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. As you guys most aware that I've spoken against this before, I'm going to voice it one more time. To me, we continue to spend money. Said, I'd love to send the federal government back a million dollars instead of us continuing to dream up ways to spend ARPA funds. Maybe we should represent our citizens, which tend to be more conservative, and say, hey, guys, we appreciate the offer, but we're not going to continue to dream of ways to spend money. The 500,000 concerns me. 200,000 going to their payroll, executive payroll, concerns me. The spending of $60,000 on remodeling whatever space that they come up with. $8,000 for each table or desk amazes me. I don't have an $8,000 desk. I don't know how many of us do. But they're buying two of them. That concerns me. And now, top of that off, I agree, if it's worth doing and you guys elect to do it, maybe using that $100,000 fund of the TOT tax to keep it going would be the way to go. Personally, I'd rather see that $100,000 go to promoting our market. And I think that would put more heads in the bed than a visitor center, which I'm still trying to figure out why people are going to come to Visit Galt, to be honest with you. I can show my tower, get a picture of it in the background. But to be honest with you, it's not a tourist destination. How we think we're going to make it into a tourist destination by dropping more than a half a million dollars into it amazes me. But just wanted to voice again, I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Phyllis Johnson?
Good evening, all. I, Phyllis Johnson, would like to volunteer to help this committee as best I can, where I have many expertise regarding to these types of transactions. Please consider me as a volunteer, because it won't cost you anything except to listen, and I'll listen to you, but I would very much like to help as a private citizen and a property owner here in Galt. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Is there any other public comment?
On Greg Davidson for L3?
Thank you again for allowing me to speak. Just real briefly, I'm old enough to remember when the building that is now Pappas and Wings, which seems to be doing very well as a restaurant here in Galt, was vacant for, it seems like at least 10 years. I've always thought of that intersection as our city center. So I think it's very important that the proposed visitor center, which I am in favor of, be located as close to Forest and C Street as possible. And I've done some research, and luckily, the buildings on either side of Pappas and Wings are vacant, and I think would make an excellent visitor center, more so the building that is located on C Street. The only thing I have ever seen it used for in my years here was for a cornhole tournament during the COVID lockdown. So I think that would be an excellent spot. It's right there, close to Highway 99, it's close to Forest and C, I mean, the Lincoln Way and C Street, which I have always thought is our main street. So I think it's important that any committee consider that, keeping it in that downtown area where there's already those vacant buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Was that the last public comment?
Well, like I say, they're put L3, Ms. Baines?
Madam Clerk, do you just want to confirm that they want to talk about the ad hoc?
That's what I did, but they're speaking on ARPA.
If it's going to be on ARPA specifically, you can speak now. The L2 item also addresses ARPA, which they're going to consider latter. This is specific to the ad hoc. Just want...
I could wait if you guys like.
Yeah, just, okay.
Mr. Attorney, I think there's just confusion about, there's people that probably want to speak about and support or opposition of the chamber thing, and so they're confused about whether that's the ARPA category or it's the ad hoc, and that's where the confusion is happening, I think here.
Right, because it does reference ARPA.
Okay, so this, okay, so this is what we'll do. We can, you can speak about it as it relates to the chamber, then when we get to L2, you can talk about the ARPA stuff, the non-chamber stuff. Does that work? I just don't want us to have it, I don't want to give someone...
We're not supposed to talk about things that aren't...
Spies at the apple, basically.
The topic on the table.
Yes.
Oh, do you have a speaker sheet?
I did. Pat Byron?
Okay, I have a couple in front of you. Sorry. Madison Del Broke, you wrote L3?
Hi, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Didn't realize only have three minutes and not five, so I'll try and make it super speedy. Thank you so much, first of all, for bringing this to a council meeting. I know we've been working on this since the first of the year, so I sincerely appreciate getting somewhere where we're making some progress. I wanted to speak on behalf of the Visit Galt proposal and tourism as a whole. Tourism isn't just people taking a vacation to Galt. Tourism is also people already coming to Galt. It's people who, or at least in the sense of our proposal, people who are driving by and stop to have lunch and so on and so forth, people coming for softball tournaments. Our goal of our proposal is simply to get more people spending money in Galt. And the reason for that is, one, it benefits our businesses, but when our benefit, our businesses do well, the city does well. An increase in sales tax equals an increase in Measure R, equals an increase in Measure Q, equals an increase in money for the city. The chamber is very much in support of the city as a whole, not just businesses, also children and seniors and other programs. So our project and our proposal is aimed at marketing and advertising and showing off what all Galt has to offer. A very key component of that is having a visitor center, and some people will debate that it's not important, but we get a lot of calls and we have a lot of people come through our existing office, and having a storefront that's accessible for people in the community and outside of the community is extremely important in us being able to deploy these efforts. A partnership with Visit California would put a kiosk, a Visit California kiosk in our office. And also, if you have gotten the opportunities, hearing me speak in the past, to look them up online, they would do a large portion of marketing with us. In order to be able to partner with them, we do have to have our own location, and it has to be professional and in a place where visitors can visit. The location that we're looking at gives us the opportunity to also have a conference room that local businesses, nonprofits and organizations could use to have meetings. The only place we currently have in Galt that's public is, I believe, the Rayleigh's Conference Room. We'd like to offer that to our members and to the public. And that is a big portion of the build-out that was itemized in our request. We'd also really like to have a classroom setting, so that way we can offer local business owners and people of the community a space where they can put on classes or receive classes, whether those be on leadership or CPR courses, taxes, the list goes on. We, the chamber, on behalf of the chamber, we really look forward to working with the city in a deeper capacity and are very grateful for, again, you setting up this ad hoc committee. The reason why we are asking for ARPA funds or upfront funds before the ad hoc committee happens is because we have a limited time to reserve the location that we want, and we want to know what kind of money we're getting, so that way we can commit or not commit to that location. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two more on L3. Pat Byron?
All right, I'm going to try not to get too close to the microphone here. In regards to agenda item L3, we do not, or I do not personally feel that the best use of one-time funds is a program that's not going to be sustainable without continued funding. Like some of the council members had said, I think it'd be best to look at some long-term funding and to reserve these other funds for other investments in the community that could also promote tourism and bring people into Galt. It is a pretty considerable amount of money. The other thing is return on investment. So if we, if you guys are going to move forward with this, you know, I think it would be wise to have some way to judge what that return on investment is. If you're spending $600,000 a year, is it bringing in $600,000 in new revenue, or is it a cash flow negative program for the city? I do support community, community programs, community centers, they can be a valuable part of your community. They give people in the community a place to come together and engage with each other, not just from outside the community. And so it is valuable, but again, I think that when we talk about one-time funds, we should look at a way to invest those that's going to add value and not create a situation where we have to have an ongoing continued investment in whatever that thing is. So that's my item for now, and I'll come back for L2.
Thank you.
Sherri Daly is online. Sherri, can you hear us? Should we come back to her?
That'd be a great idea, give her an opportunity to reconnect. Councilman Farmer, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just a few things. So, you know, I too, we've, I've spoken to a lot of people on this subject, and I've heard, you know, a lot of people in support of it. I've heard people in opposition to it, people tonight who have spoken, Mr. Brosman, have a lot of respect for Mr. Brosman, and I think what he and others, citizens that come to me say weighs very heavily on me, because sometimes decisions are not always easy to make in this position, because I would love to say that all decisions are going to make everybody happy, but there's just, sometimes there's ones that are difficult, and you have to weigh a lot of factors in. What I would like to mention to, in regards to some things that some people are saying is I heard the word from the last gentleman who just spoke about investment, and I think, you know, if, you know, we recently passed a tax measure that's intended to really kind of prop up our parks and rec, and hopefully, you know, I believe is going to be a legacy funding mechanism for this town, for parks and recreation. But what you can't do is you can't organize a fundraiser and then not advertise the fundraiser. If you want the fundraiser to be successful, I think you have to have, you have to think of the big picture and you have to put things in place that are going to drive that. Now, does that mean that that program is what the chamber's proposing? Well, some people would say no. I do think that a time is, it's, the time has come where we need to do something in this town to promote tourism. I hear a lot of people talking about tourism, thinking that, you know, what's Galt got to offer? It actually hurts my feelings to hear that, because like, I think Galt has a lot to offer. It amazes me how many times, every single day, I have people coming in my place of business that are not from here. I had a couple from New Zealand in our shop a couple days ago. I had a couple from Ireland about two weeks ago, passing through, just happened to be in California, going to Yosemite here and there, and somehow they just ended up in Galt, and they want to know what else there was to do here. And so we pointed them to a few things, pointed them to the Ray House Museum, pointed them to, you know, asked them how long they're going to be in town, said, hey, there's a Saturday market coming up. There's actually a lot of things in Galt to come to. You know, we have a Galt flea market that's been operating for 60 years. I would love to see more people come to that. Some people maybe don't want to see more traffic in town on market days, and I understand that. We have a great new Saturday market, which was awesome this last weekend, and kudos to staff for making the second season of that great. But we obviously want, you know, we want more people to frequent that. So when people say they don't know what people are going to come for, I mean, McFarland Ranch is a big wedding venue that books a lot of activities, that people come and stay in town for weddings out there. People come, and then not only just McFarland Ranch, but there's Champagne Ranch, and there's Valenciennes, I mean, there's a whole plethora of venues in our area that people come into town for events, all from out of town. There is, you know, we have our IDC Festival, which is great, love to see more people come to that. We have our Christmas lighting the night. These are not just things that are just for Galt, I mean, they're put on for Galt citizens, but we really want, now, I'm not a fan of having more people here as far as rooftops, and I think I've made that clear, but we're not asking these people to move here, we're just asking for them to come and enjoy some things that we're doing for them, whether it's a, you know, a festival of sorts that somebody's putting on, or it's a farm-to-fork dinner that the FFA is putting on. Do we not want outside tax dollars? Do we not want low-die people to come down here? Do we not want, you know, people passing through to, to have seen something in some marketing somewhere and said, hey, we should stop there? There's that Galt place we just saw and that, that ad that popped up on Facebook or whatever, we should stop there and check it out. I think, you know, there's been some things said about, you know, is this the best use of some of this money? I think there's a myth that this is all the money there is. I would agree that if we were just given this money and we had to pick from 100 different things, which we're being presented some tonight, that it would be a much, you know, different conversation. What I want to point out, though, and this is my last little comment I'll make, and then I'll have some other comments, but I can circle back, is that we originally allocated in some of our ARPA money, you know, $1.3 million to businesses. That was just a small percentage of the overall ARPA money, which in my opinion was really intended to pro- intended to prop up and, and, and really try to help cities come back from the pandemic. Businesses suffered during the pandemic. We, we all suffered. I know businesses that were closed down. As a matter of fact, one of my own businesses, I have two businesses, one was completely, it's shuttered now because of pandemic, because of the impacts it had. 25 years and it's shuttered because of impacts of COVID. And so we allocated that money for businesses. Now unfortunately, all that money was not given out and there's about 500,000 left over. So I want to remind people too, and I, and I do appreciate people's, you know, opposition and, and I'm only just stating that I personally am only looking, thinking if that money was originally intended to help businesses, something like this, some kind of program to market, this is not just a tourist center, this is not just one thing, this is a multitude of things that they're asking for. This is a, you know, a marketing campaign, this is, it's a broad thing, they have a great presentation, is to help those businesses by proxy. If we had given out the 1.3, we wouldn't even be talking about this right now because, and nobody would even be opposed to it, but the fact is that we still had some of that, that earmarked money that we did left over. So all we're asking, um, to, for people to understand, and I think all the chambers really asking for is that can piece of that, can some of that money be, be used to help the businesses still? And I think that's important to, to understand. There, there, you know, our next item, there's going to be a whole bunch of items that are going to be asked for, for our ARPA money. We've already spent, you know, probably a million and a half dollars on Parks and Rec things, new, new slides, I can go on and on. We're being asked for a whole bunch more things tonight, and there's a lot of other things that are, this community is going to be benefiting from that ARPA money. But I think that we need to not be short-sighted and we need to be thinking about the long term. We have measure Q and measure R. These two things are important to our community. They help public safety and they're going to help public, they're going to help Parks and Recreation. If we don't help those funds grow, we do nothing, then we're just going to sit back on our hands and do nothing. We just think this is going to happen, you know, especially for not building more rooftops. I prefer with not to see the rooftops and see another way to bring the money in, that's what I would prefer. So I'm going to stop right there at that. I have some other stuff, but I'd like to maybe hear, there's a caller on, hopefully they'll come up, get their comments in, but that's what I have for the moment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to propose a thing, something a little different actually, but you know, as far as expectation goes, I think every single council member, including city staff, would have nothing less than, oh, some sort of oversight and, uh, you know, there's always legal requirements in any transaction. We certainly want to be transparent and, and be diligent with the citizens' money. Uh, I think it's also very normal for cities to have a, a welcome center and one that promotes everything within the city. We all have had rave, rave reviews about the downtown market. That market was nothing but an idea in 2021. It didn't, there was nothing but sidewalk there until somebody said, let's try this. And look what we have now. Now, is it, you know, it's a good start and it needs to get bigger, but the CESCA Centennial Event, which the chamber wants to reenact as an annual event, is another great example of having a good idea, marketing it, developing it so that it can bring people into the city. As far as bringing money back to the city, right now we bleed roughly $3.5 million every year outside of this community. So that's a lot of dollars because that's only the tax revenue. So if you, we have a 10% or 8% tax base, think about how much money must be spent in your town to retrieve those tax dollars back to general funds. So it's hard to track, you could see growth, but you know, that's going to go to, uh, like dining receipts, but it's also measure R and measure Q, which is not, you know, straight across gains, but it certainly will have an effect on the city. In the past, we had a strawberry festival, which is no longer, you know, whether, for whatever reason it's gone is, is not important. It's those ideas and how they're managed is, is what's going to make something successful. Anybody that runs a business knows that, you know, it takes constant effort and, um, that's what the chamber's trying to do. So what I would like to do, and I don't want to cross-talk on, um, agenda items, be, and you'll see here in, in the next agenda item that there's a bunch of discussion about ARPA funds, but I would actually propose that we give $500,000 out of the general fund or commit to it at this point. I'm not saying that we can legally do that because it's not agendized, but we show commitment by this, by the council and we still work through the ad hoc committee for the TOT tax and how this money will be spent and importantly, reported back to the city council and the city in general so that the citizens know that we're being responsible with the money. But the reason I want to do that is because if we use ARPA funds, there's a lot more hoops to jump through. There's a lot more, um, federal oversight and federal restrictions, if you want to, if you will. I don't think that we will be any less responsible with the money, but I do think it gives the chamber the freedom to, um, the freedom of movement with what they want to do and perhaps more importantly, or just as importantly, is that if we have, if they have a commitment from us today, they can go out and start addressing, uh, the place that they want to acquire for the, for the welcome center. And, and like they mentioned, it's, uh, this started in the first of the year. Here we are almost to tax day and we have, you know, we're moving at this pace of government is what we're doing. So, um, I don't know if any of my council members support that, but, um, there's my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, we still have a, a couple more comments. Do you want to hear them?
Yes, thank you.
Bonnie Rodriguez.
I don't know that I need to speak after what Jay just proposed, but I'm going to give a little history lesson. I tend to do that when I'm up here, just so everyone is aware, because no one up on the dais and I don't even think any of the staff was here at the time, but in 2006, and this is, and I'm sad that the seniors, most of them left, because I wish they would have heard this, but Senior Place was built with city money. It was the, and the name is, um, the redevelopment fees. So I think the city has some little investment in there that maybe that give you a little pool. But back in 2006, when the city received a bunch of money, there was an agreement that was made in order to receive that money. And that was two things, well, many things, but two of those things was that they form an economic task force, which they did. The other thing was that they developed an MOU with the chamber at the time, which was what formed Galt Shop Local. Anyone heard of these programs? They don't exist anymore. And why? The city pulled out of them. The city cut, just, it didn't get the support, even the economic task force didn't get the support from the city that, that was promised and what they were legally obligated to do. It went on the wayside and the city at the time, none of these people up here, by the way, none of these people. The city at the time threw all of the responsibilities for that Galt Shop Local back at the chamber. And the chamber took on all of the liability, they took on all of it. Actually, I take that back, Armando was here during part of that. It, it worked for a time, but it was the city who pulled out. It wasn't the chamber. The chamber was active, we were fulfilling our part, we were putting on events, we were doing all of these things. It hasn't been the chamber that has tripped up. The chamber has a reputation out there, good and bad, like every organization, like every city, like every city council member, like every neighbor. It happens, people get upset, people get happy. Right now, this is an investment and we have full confidence in the city right now that we can get a MOU together and have a lasting relationship. We have all that confidence, we can do that. And because we think we have the right people right now. So we can get this going, ad hoc committee, great. Um, I am with Jay, I think this has been a long time coming, this isn't something, a new proposal, we've been talking about this for months and months. So it would be great if the city council could go ahead and start making movement on that initial money and we'd love to get into that ad hoc committee and discuss the further relationship.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Um, I would like to try our online speaker again.
Excellent.
Sherry Daly. Oh, she logged.
Did you say she's gone?
She's on here. I don't know why she's not coming.
Okay, can, can you just, if she can hear me maybe, just tell her to chime in as soon as you can, just keep trying. If Councilman Farmer or any other council members have a comment they'd like to add, let them go ahead and if, when, and if Cheryl Daly is available, please let her go. Ms. Parker?
Um, you just don't have a number. Do you want to speak on this item?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they want.
Okay.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Vandenberg, city council, city manager, and the staff. My name is Terry Parker, I am with Parker Reality, and I just wanted to take a moment of your time and to share my appreciation to the Galt Chamber for working so hard and putting together the Visit Galt Project and marketing campaign, and to the city of Galt for working with the chamber to make this a reality. This is more than a visitor's center, it's a project to bring positive recognition to Galt and all it has to offer. With this brings more sales tax dollar to our city and will booster, bolster measure Q, R, which helps our whole community. The chamber is not asking the city to flip the bill on its own, but to partner with the chamber, because the chamber will be investing in this too. This brings me to ARPA funds, but, or if there's the city wants to use different funds, after hearing everyone speak, but I, I talk about ARPA funds because that's, was on the agenda tonight. I know tonight you are voting on dispersing some of those funds, so I just wanted to keep the chamber in the forefront as you plan to use the remainder funds. A one-time investment would help the project get off the ground and obtain a permanent location, which is what is needed now. The city has a chamber board and members full of talent, energy, and love of their community willing to donate their time. Use them, invest in them with a participation that will help our businesses, community, and citizens. I know there is some concern with ARPA money and its use for many other city, and its use, but many other cities have given ARPA money to city chamber, chambers to process, excuse me, and the process has been vetted through them. So with that, um, I would say I lost my train, that's why I take notes. What better way to help our small businesses who suffered so much during the pandemic than to invest in the city's biggest supporter of businesses than the Galt Chamber of Commerce? Thank you.
Thank you. Did Ms. Johnson put a card in for this item?
Uh, she just wrote me a quick note.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson, I'm, I'm impressed with your flexibility and strength, but it, it is not required, although I appreciate your efforts.
Okay, we're trying Sherry one more time. We're going to have her call, because this isn't coming through, she's not muted.
While we're waiting for her, could I?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Um, you know, I had, I had made some notes and I was thinking, um, you know what's interesting is, and Ms. Mendez, is Ms. Mendez here tonight? She's not?
Yes, she's online. Would you like?
Okay, okay. No, no, I just, I have a question for her, I just wanted she was listening, but, you know, I, I was thinking to myself, you know, if, if the staff had come, if Ms. Mendez, who is our, for those of you who don't know, our economic development, um, she's very, this is her wheelhouse, you know, generating business and stuff in town and getting people to move here and more tax money and all that stuff, that's, that's what she does. She wears many hats. And so, you know, if she had come to staff with a, with a staff report and said, you know, I had this idea about launching and marketing our branding campaign, and we want to start a bold initiative to boost, you know, tourism, to capture those, those tax dollars that are, people are passing through our area, and we want to boost, you know, the revenue for our measure R, we want to boost the measure, the money for measure, for measure Q, we want to launch a visitor's centers, this one small piece of it, and, you know, we want to do this. And then, of course, we would need to hire, um, some more staff possibly to, to help her, because I'm one person, so she wanted to ask for some staff allocation. Or maybe, you know, you know, I have a great consultant I've worked with and they can do that work for us and, you know, we all hear about consultants, we spend a lot of money on them, they're not cheap. Um, and, and all of that, uh, you know, to make an investment in our, in our economy and investment in our community, um, what, what would we be saying up here? What would, if, to take those ex, that's leftover money for businesses and do that with it, we would probably be like, yeah, it's a great idea. But we're not being asked that. We're being asked as this chamber to do that. And because the chamber's being asked, there seems to be this, ooh, I don't think that's a good idea, I don't think whatever. I want to remind people, the chamber is the oldest organization in town, founded in 1909. I mean, they've had some roller coaster, you know, uh, ride over, you know, different directors and things like that, but I feel the chamber is stronger than ever right now. I mean, is there a chance that we give them whatever it is, whatever money it is, seed money, to get this thing rolling so that they can get it off the ground and then they can use their funds to continue it on? Is there a chance that it won't be successful? Yeah, of course, there's always that chance. But is there going to be another opportunity for us to be able to do this? I mean, it, we have to make an investment in our community at some point, and I have confidence that they would be successful. I'm not a big fan, as an elected official, I say this, but I'm not a big fan, I, I don't feel that government always does the best job. It's just the nature of government, it's slow, it tends to, you know, sometimes maybe do things not as efficient as private enterprise, and I think all staff would probably agree with me on some point that this is just the nature of how things. I would rather see this, this in the hands of private, uh, a private organization that has proven what they can do for this city, of course, with checks and balances, obviously. MOU, absolutely. We're not just going to be like, whatever. I would actually propose that whatever we do tonight, it's accompanied with semi-annual reporting, where the chamber would come back and say, this is what we spent the money on so far, here's, here's, here's a spreadsheet of what we've done so far, here's an update on the progress, here's a, here's, here's our ongoing efforts and this is what we're going to be launching next month, and this is what we've done. I would like to see that conjunction, maybe work with Amy, to see, maybe we can see if there's any fluctuation in our sales tax dollars, if, we can see, if we can see some of the, the, the impact of that over, you know, over the course of a year. But obviously, we're not going to be like, yeah, just go ahead and use it for whatever. Are some of the costs in their proposal inflated? Maybe. I mean, you'll hear from me later tonight, I think there's some costs inflated in some of our own staff stuff, which I'm going to be asking about, but, you know, uh, I, I think that, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to making them sharpen their pencil, you know, so the 500 was thrown out there, I mean, I'm sure they'd be happy to get the 500. I would, I actually have an alter suggestion and maybe a little bit less. I personally would like to see the 60,000 left over from the nonprofit money, uh, 66,000, but whatever, 60,000. I'd like to see some of that money be distributed back into the nonprofits in the form of our community grant, our sponsorship program this year and next year. I think then it gets into the hands of the nonprofits like it was intended. So I would like to carve out that piece from the, from the chamber piece, so we're not going further into some of the expenditures. But again, I think what we're asking for, you know, for, for, for those of you to understand, and I, and I do support this idea, I'm going to state that, I, what I'm asking you to understand is that I, I get that it's a, it's bold, but I think it's, it's a worthy investment, and I think that that money will bring back tenfold in the long run, I truly do. And so I, I just wanted to state that again, and I do appreciate, um, you know, the input on all, on all fronts, for and against, I, I truly do. So that's all I have for the moment, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I'd like a point of clarification from a council. Reading this, it says, discuss and provide direction. That's not necessarily a voteable item, correct? So I, I ask that because I want to provide, um, I want to provide legal, a legal statement to the chamber in my, from my personal opinion that we will commit X amount of dollars, you know, even if the MOU says you, you must be responsible and if, if you don't spend it, it comes back, or whatever works out as, you know, some of the items may refer, I mean, Councilman Farmer brought up, but as, as a point of voting, it's not an actual voting item, correct?
Yeah, the, the item L3 is really just to decide whether we want to move forward with ad hoc. And all this discussion is relevant to it. Council can, you know, provide direction to do the ad hoc if certain things apply, certain conditions apply or circumstances apply, but that's what this item is, is for.
Okay, thank you. So I, I am for the ad hoc committee. Councilman Papinell, you stated earlier that you felt responsible to be on it, I think, or did I miss, um, just assume?
No, you heard me right.
Okay, I, I would also like to be on the ad hoc committee if my fellow council members agree.
Well, what do we, but again, what do we, what do we, what's the?
Yeah, you're going to want to clarify this. Yeah, you're going to want to clarify this, because I heard a few.
Right, well, I can only do one thing at a time, but. So what would you like to see?
I personally, well, two questions to what you mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor. One is, I too would agree that I would rather see the ad hoc be formed for the purpose and intent of discussing possible TOT allocations in the future out of the budget for ongoing efforts. I would rather see that, because I think the process is going to take a little longer. I don't, I think that this is dragged out long enough. I would rather see a decision made for some seed money this evening for this project, and then the ad hoc could then be able to move forward. Of course, you know, I am all for, you know, of course, an MOU and an agreement and such, you know, parameter set. But I, you mentioned something about general fund. I would like to ask Frank, how would that work? Is, would we, I would only be supportive of that if it was backfilled by the leftover ARPA money.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so what we can, you can use ARPA funds for general governmental services. So the general fund, to keep it really simple, could be replenished with ARPA dollars. So the net impact of the general fund would be effectively zero.
Okay. So I would support something like that, the dollar amount, I guess. I would like to hear from my other constituents. But as far as the ad hoc specifically, I would rather see that broken off and have a more focused purpose of that and not the overall allocation of the initial seed money. That's what I would like to see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same thing, Mayor mentioned something, the ARPA money, we should be consider without ARPA money or general fund, if ARPA money can refill without consider the ad hoc. As I mentioned before, we know, we have a ad hoc committee when the garbage or waste management argument. That's why the big, this ARPA money we have right now, we have a total 6.3 million approximate. We give the ARPA money every department. We give the ARPA money to new equipment. So I'm still believing what the mayor proposed. This ARPA money, whatever is left from the businesses, it should go to the Chamber, because the Chamber, that money also can, some of the money can fill back to the city, because if they're going to have somebody be here for visiting, they're going to any restaurant is, or something they can buy it, is the tax, a sale tax. If they stay somewhere, it's TOT tax. And this part of that tax is come back to the city. So we also supporting that city too. So the ad hoc committee, yes, I'm agree with that. If there is a long-term or something Chamber planning to support, they should come through the lengthy process. They come through the MOU. And that's whatever the, you know, that's mayor proposal, I will support that proposal. Thank you.
If there's no other comment from council, go ahead, Mr. Lozano.
First of all, I don't think there is, certainly not a dispute for needing to do something with economic development, and I think partnership with the Chamber is appropriate. Herein lies where my, the issue is for me. If we are to give or use general fund money and refill it with ARPA money, I understand it makes it a lot easier to use ARPA money for a specific purpose. And I'm with that. I think more for the reason that using general fund money or TOT money is more of a commitment. The one, the issue that I have, and I've had since January 12th, when I met with the Chamber, I believe it was 12th, is that we don't have anything in writing to say, this is what it's going to be used for. Here's what we're going to do. Here's what the city is going to do. Whether it's money, seed money, or ongoing money, that needs to be hammered out. And again, I love the Chamber. I love the stuff they do for our businesses, and I love our businesses. I just think that it would be less than responsible of me to agree to provide money. And I know there's a presentation, and I understand what it's going for, but I, you know, I heard the, I heard the statement of inflated numbers. And honestly, I'm going to take people back to September 2018. And I want you to know, whatever I've said, I'm saying up here tonight is not something that my colleagues over at the Chamber haven't heard, but we had a council make a decision on a contract that was a public contract. I mean, it was, and come to find out, they didn't do their due diligence. And I just want to make sure that whatever we come up with for a commitment to the Chamber and to the community, as well as our colleagues in the business industry, that we do it right. And so that's kind of where I am. I'm in favor of the ad hoc, and I think that Councilman Papinow and Mayor Vandenberg would be awesome to serve on that. And so that's just kind of my statement. And I want to thank the folks that came out and talked tonight. I want to also thank the individuals that emailed. We got, so everyone knows, we got several, probably 12 or 14 emails after about 3:00 today. So I didn't get to read them all, but I certainly got the gist of what was said. So I appreciate it.
We have a public comment on the line?
Yes, we have her on the phone.
Yes, thank you. Or, am I audible now?
Yes, yes.
I went up at my phone and was unsuccessful in getting into the Zoom. I don't know what's going on. I've been on Zooms all week. Honorable Mayor and Members, Sherry Daly, I've been a member of the community for over 30 years and served as Planning Commissioner for a number of years. I would like to express my opposition to the suggestion that we spend half a million dollars on this project. It seems to me a colossal waste of money. As Mr. Farmer pointed out, people who come through town asking any business, what can we do around here? And they get the help they need. It's not necessary to spend $500,000 to accomplish that. I'd like to see a break-even point on how long it would take exactly to pay back $500,000, $500,000 that we're considering here. And I would like to see some sort of relationship as to what other cities of much larger size give to their chambers. I think this is a grotesque expenditure when you compare it to what other cities our size, even in Lodi, they don't give this amount of money to their chambers. And I question the oversight. If oversight means show us what you wasted money on, a $9,000 desk times two, that's not oversight. That's showing receipts on wasted taxpayer dollars. We voted to tax ourselves to do things that are important to us as citizens, like clean up our common spaces. I walk through high weeds in my neighborhood and our common spaces. I know you can't fix it all with $500,000, but you certainly can fix a few blocks of it. And I think that the hurry to finish this tonight is so that the public doesn't know what's going on, and by the time they find out, you've already handed over the money. Or as the Chamber President said, she wants to know how much she's getting, not if she's getting money, but how much. I would like to see three committees formed, not one ad hoc committee, one that would put two council members with two people who do children activities in our town, Sarah McFagin, a Boy Scout leader. Let them come up with a budget for $500,000 that would improve their programs. Two people from neighborhoods that are impacted by blight with two council members to see what we can do to improve our common spaces with that money. And how about two people who are affected by the homelessness that is impacting our neighborhoods and our businesses, sit down with two council members to develop a plan to use that money. I have nothing against the Chamber. Many of them are wonderful people, and they have great businesses in town. But really, I think this council has lost track of exactly how much money $500,000 is. I think it's just, this seems like we're in silly land to me, and I think it needs to be pulled back. I think there needs to be much more public input on how to spend a half a million dollars. And I just, I just am truly, honestly surprised that with so many important things that we have, that our city is facing coming into a recession, that we would basically waste money on a visitor center that a city our size can't use and that people aren't looking for. They have a phone to find things in Galt, restaurants, et cetera. This is just way beyond the pale, and it needs to be pulled back, and it needs to be looked at, and there needs to be careful consideration, not a rush to throw that money out the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Farmer?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Ms. Daly. I know Ms. Daly and I had some dialogue outside of this meeting, where she voiced many of the concerns she had, that she expressed. And again, I do have a lot of respect for people that want to look out for taxpayer dollars, because I think that's why I'm up here. And I think I have demonstrated many times in the past, like a little over the top even sometimes, about trying to save money on expenditures. But again, I want to circle back and remind people that we appointed $1.3 million originally out of all our ARPA money, which was a small percentage, to our business community. And all of that through two rigorous processes, we still were left with 500. A lot of businesses didn't get that. They didn't feel comfortable with maybe turning over their tax paperwork, you know, that kind of whatever. We're not asking those businesses that did take the 800. We're not, we're not sitting there asking, well, when are they going to pay that money back? Are we? No. We're not asking to pay that 800 back that businesses got. This is just more of that money. This is the remaining portion we are, I am only asking that this remaining portion be set to benefit these businesses by proxy, not just the businesses, but the tax base in this town, which is going to ultimately feed into things like Ms. Daly mentioned. If the more prosperous Measure Q is, the more we're able to take our, maintain our green spaces. I want, Frank can correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually cannot use ARPA money to do ongoing maintenance. It's not allowed. We can't just say, let's just take the 500, and let's hire a bunch of extra mowing people, and let's go do that. It has to be like set purchases. It has to be, there's lots of parameters around it. I want to let people know that I absolutely agree that there's a lot of things we need in this town, absolutely. But I want to state that we've already spent $1.4 million of ARPA money already, just on Parks and Rec alone. And tonight, when it comes to the ARPA discussion, we're going to be asked for almost another million dollars, again, for Parks and Rec, along with a lot of other things that are well-needed in this town. Everything ranging from IT stuff, which is desperately in need of replacement, to public works things, stuff for police department. There is a lot of needs that are going to be accomplished with that ARPA money that we're going to be discussing. I am simply only asking that this 500, and is 500 a lot of money? Heck, yeah, it's a lot of money. I mean, it is. But it's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of what that small 500 can do. We have a $17 million general fund. We're asking to invest 500,000 to prop up a tax measure like Measure Q, which generates, Measure Q, Measure R, going to generate something like, I don't know, three and a half million dollars per year, so to speak. I mean, we're asking to invest 500, if it is 500, maybe it's not going to be, to shore up and help boost those tax measures. I mean, to think that that's silly for us to do that, to accuse us of being wasteful to do that, I think is off-base, because I, for one, am always going to bat for being smarter about spending our tax dollars. But I also understand the theory of investment. You know, I'm a business owner. I have been for over 30 years, and I understand that you have to make investment in your business to move the ball forward. You can't just buy one-time things. There has to be an advertising budget. There has to be investment in how your customers are going to know about you. You have to do all those things in order people to come here. I mean, Ms. Mendez understands that. Her and I have a conversation. She gets it. She knows. She understands that. And circling back to, again, about asking the city to put something like that together, I want to make a point about Councilman Lozano's comment. I respect that your mindset with wanting to make sure we get it right. But I think to compare a garbage contract, a 30-year garbage contract, with which substantially crippled business in town and was basically like a ball and chain attached to businesses indefinitely, to compare that to just giving one-time seed money to the Chamber, I think is like comparing an orange tree with a plum or some, it's not even, that's not even relevant. It's a terrible comparison, and this is not a garbage contract. So again, I support giving some funding. Whether or not it's 500, I don't know. Again, I kind of circle back to seeing a little bit, go back to the nonprofits. But this money will be used to help our community at large. People don't understand, it has to, it's a domino effect. You can't go in reverse. And we don't get an opportunity for this kind of money once and for all. I mean, I agree with Mr. Brosman. I agree with you absolutely. The ARPA concept overall, I think it's going to just burden our grandchildren futures, and I think, but what I'm not going to do is say, no, thank you. Let just go ahead and give it to Sacramento, because if this people of Galt can benefit from that money, then I'm going to use it for the people of Galt, absolutely. And I'm not going to look back. Do I agree with the concept? No. But I'm not going to turn it away. It's there, and we're going to use it. So I just wanted to add that in response to Ms. Daly's. We appreciate your comments, Ms. Daly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So do you have a comment, Ms. Papinow?
Yeah, I mean, to bring it back around to what my request was, for an ad hoc committee to work with the Chamber to define and develop an MOU, perhaps redevelop and improve on the one that may have existed years ago. And I think, you know, we've kind of gone off into other areas, but if we could just get back to, shall we form an ad hoc committee to develop an MOU with the Chamber that will define our roles as partners going forward?
Is there support from the council for that particular item?
This relationship I'm talking about is not specific to, Visit Galt brought up the topic. And since then, I've had a lot of input on different Visitor Bureau, Conference Bureau, you know, items, and a lot of other ways that the city and the Chamber can work together in economic development overall. And I think now's the time to put that relationship together and start serious economic development as partners.
Mr. Mayor, if I add something to make, find maybe a compromise with Mr. Papinow? I would support keeping the ad hoc, the ad hoc to discuss the MOU if, two things. One is there is a set timeframe on the ad hoc parameter-wise, like this is, this is when they're going to meet, and this is when we're going to have a heart, this is where we're going to circle back. But I would also, in conjunction with that, and this is a big one, that I would like to come up with a dollar figure that we are going to carve out and commit to that. And then the ad hoc can develop what that MOU looks like and the language and that, but the dollar amount is specified. I would be able to entertain that. But again, I agree, we're on a short timeline here, and we're not rushing. This has been talked about for months. And we have to make a decision on this money very soon, as we are going to be talking about the rest of the ARPA money on the very next agenda item.
Wouldn't a, and I'm trying to, trying to keep it in the parameters of, shall we do an ad hoc? If we're talking about a one-time contribution, wouldn't that be better in the next agenda item, where we're doing all of the other one-time expenditures of ARPA money?
Well, we could accept that I'm, except I think, I think what it is, but I'm more interested in doing it the way that the mayor suggested. That technically wouldn't be ARPA money, right? So, or maybe am I wrong?
Yeah, I don't think, these conversations are overlapping, and honestly, could have been, should have been opened up as one, as one item. And so, you know, we're just tripping all over ourselves, trying to, trying to have one conversation without the other. So I think that, I think, I think what I'm going to say is, Mayor, you just need to open up the, this other item, and we can take public comment on it. I think continue this discussion with the Chamber, isolate that, and then we can move on with the rest of the L2 item. So you can open up the L2 item now. We can open up both at the same time. There's no problem with that. Deal with this Chamber piece, piece that off, and then we can move up to the rest of the ARPA discussion, if that works. Because I think it's just getting too, it's too difficult.
I hear your point. That's why I proposed not using ARPA funds to try to move away from that portion of the conversation. Before I do that, is there support to have an ad hoc committee for the, for an MOU and long-term TOT tax, as was suggested, with general funds? And if it's not agreed upon, I want the Chamber to have the opportunity to get moving. So if it's not agreed upon, the Chamber would agree to pay back every penny, if any money is even given.
Well, I'm not asking that they be given the money without the MOU. What I would agree with is, I'm willing to compromise to Mr. Papinow and Mr. Lozano to have an MOU drafted. But I want to, there has to be a timeframe attached to it, and it needs to be short. But I want the money to be, I want the money, I want, I want us to, I would, I would support tonight to use X amount general fund, backfilled by ARPA, only if that's the case.
All right, so let's do one thing. I hear you.
With the ad hoc to come up with the MOU.
So we agree on ad hoc, so we can just check that off. Can we agree on 500,000 from the general fund?
I can't because the ad hoc is to create the MOU, which creates the spending plan. And I'm opposed.
Can you agree to general fund money?
I I don't know where the money can come from.
You can agree to it with the ad hoc, whether the money comes from, whether it doesn't matter what pile you. I mean, it does matter, but we know it's going to come from one or two places. So we can agree for the flexibility of the chamber that the MOU will be based on general fund money.
A dollar is a dollar. I I want the ad hoc to create the MOU to create the spending plan before we spend money. That's.
Do you support that?
I don't I'm kind of confused by what Kevin's saying. The the MOU, the the spending plan, you you could say this is the grant. When we get a grant for the city, we propose we write for the grant, we get the grant, and then they come up with an expenditure plan. There there's not also there's not always uh, you don't always have to have an expenditure plan in place before. We get money, just like we got this ARPA money. Then we came up with an expenditure plan afterwards. I'm not saying give them the money, let them start spending before we come up with the MOU. I think the MOU has to be completed and be decided. We got the two council members to come back from the ad hoc and say, we we all came to an agreement. This is where we think the money is going to be thing. The chamber wanted to use this. We found some compromise and now we're going to go ahead and give them the money. So I'm not saying give them the money advanced, but I want a number to be specified because I don't want I don't want that money. Well, because we're having ARPA discussions and that money has to all be earmarked. And I don't want that money just hanging out there. We need to close this ARPA discussion out and be done with it tonight.
So Mayor Sandu, do you support uh, the ad hoc committee with at a general fund funding level?
Yes, I will. Because that if that ARPA money, whatever is backfilled with the general fund, we're just using the general fund term. But actually, this is allocated money already with the small businesses.
I agree.
And the other thing I would like to add the reason because we spent, as you said, we spent almost 3 point plus 6.3 million. And when we allocated that money or give to any department, we never have create any ad hoc committee. I do understand there is ad hoc committee need be if there is a long term. If there is a relation between city and the chamber. But this money, if we consider it as a ARPA money, there is a leftover money uh, from the business. Uh, I don't believe in to uh, be ad hoc. But yes, there is as mentioned, uh, yeah, there is a 500,000 dollar whatever is available as we my colleague said, I'm I'm happy with that.
That's to Mr. Lozano.
Um, I I'll just make this statement and everybody will know where I'm at. Um, I have an issue with spending any amount of money earmarked or not without a plan to move forward. And I think it's irresponsible. Um, do I think the chamber will do good things with it? Absolutely. But just so the public knows, the garbage contract example was giving as a given as an example only in that I believe that us five need to do our due diligence. And in my estimation, again, only my opinion, that wasn't done in September of 2018. Just like we have to do our due diligence when we get a request to do a bid. And whether or not we piggyback on a bid, just like when a new position is developed in the city. We have to just do our due diligence and decide whether to fund it or not. It has nothing to do with the amount. I would argue that a community block grant is much different than 500, half a million dollars. We're talking about requests for, you know, 15, 16,000 dollars with a an application process, a vetting process through the council, just like we did the bit those the small business grant program and the nonprofit grant program for the same money we're talking about. That wasn't just done. That was done with a healthy discussion up here about how that would be administered. And as I remember it, the first request was get with the chamber to see how we can best do this this program. So I don't think there's a lack of partnership. And I want to make it very clear, I don't necessarily think that we shouldn't do something with the chamber. I just have a problem committing to uh, an amount of money that's going to be acceptable without having people sit down together and figure out how we're going to do it.
For clarification, I'm not proposing an X amount of dollars. I'm only proposing at this point that we have an ad ad hoc committee to perform to ensure proper oversight, but money allocated out of general fund for flexibility. So everything you're asking for, I am on board with.
So first of all, let me point out that was there not a proposal given?
I was asking a question, sir.
Go ahead.
So I don't want to make this any more difficult than it is or any more convoluted. But if the ad hoc committee comes back and says, we need X, Y, and Z, and it that is an appropriate ARPA funding mechanism, I think we spend it there. I think if it's a general fund, that makes sense. Let's spend it there. If we're talking about ongoing like they've requested, like the chambers requested, an ongoing TOT contribution, then we need to do that at a TOT.
Well, yes, that that is the.
So let's make.
Thank you. Sorry, I just want to make sure that I I did want that in there as well.
Yeah, I did. I don't want to, I mean, again, this doesn't have to be that difficult. But it's either, you know, um, again, the dollar is a dollar. So let's let's get something moving and not and not sit on it.
Mr. Farmer.
First of all, I want to remind everybody that the chamber did give us a presentation. Uh, they presented at the council meeting. They also gave it to us before and after that has an expenditure plan attached to it. Now, whether or not I completely agree with everything in the expenditure plan, I'm not saying it. I mean, I didn't see anything that, you know, that overall concept of where, you know, that they're going to do a marketing campaign, a branding campaign, they're going to do some renovations to a possible tour. You know, there's all these things, but it's not like they're just, there's nothing presented. If you're going to do if you're going to do a marketing strategy and put that out there, you you sometimes don't know what that stuff's going to cost. So for them to come back with an exact dollar amount, you're talking about a lot of time for them to go out and say, okay, we spoke to this firm and this firm and this firm. We don't know which ones going to do the best marketing. Maybe this one and their initial cost is going to be 20,000, but it could be ended up being 30,000 depending on how the marketing strategy goes. If you understand marketing, you understand that it doesn't. It's not just a set amount like you just sign your plumber to fix your pipe. There there's ongoing costs and things change. We're going to be asked on this next item to disperse the rest of our ARPA money. If you're not going to carve out money for a chamber, then there's going to be this money left out there. Are you just going to leave that sitting there for two, three, four months? Are you going to go into the budget? But these are midterm budget asks that the staff is asking us for. You know, there's lots of items on that list, uh, you know, a couple million dollars worth that we can't, we're going to hold up that process because you want to have a two or three month discussion about exactly, you know, this. I mean, I I feel like there's nothing wrong with saying this is how much money we're going to set aside for this program. But and here it is, and it's set aside and it's earmarked for that. And then what we're going to do is we're going to have an ad hoc committee that's going to sit down and we're going to get into the weeds about where we think that money is going to go. And when we come back with a a a, maybe it's a maybe it's a revised expenditure plan of the one they've already presented. And then we say, okay, we think that's fair and let's proceed forward. Here's the money. We're not going to give them the money and spend it in advance. But there's a problem with if we wait on this, you're going to it's just going to convolute the additional items that we're talking about tonight. That's the point I'm trying to make. I am not against the ad hoc and I'm not against come sitting down and and hashing out numbers. I just want to see the money earmarked aside saying that. Did we did we form an ad hoc when we gave out 800,000 dollars to businesses? Did we form an ad hoc when we gave away money to? Did we form an ad hoc when we gave Parks and Rec 1.4 million dollars? Like Sherry suggested, where we should form an ad hoc and see what the community thinks that money should be spent? No, we relied on the staff to come back and say, this is what we think the money should be used for. And we looked at it and we talked and we approved it. I don't know why we're trying to muddy the waters up so much on this.
No, that that is that is correct. We we did all that, but we did it within guidelines that were prescribed. And here we have prescribed no guidelines.
Sure, we have.
We have a plan and they can go and do what they want with it.
No, that's. No, 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 that is not what I'm proposing. I'm proposing.
No, the plan as it exists now. There's no measurables. There's no strings.
That's what the that's what the ad hoc that I'm proposing will do, correct?
And that goes first. Spending plan.
Right, no.
Measurables, oversight.
That's why I adjusted it to say, the point, the main point that I'm trying to make is that if the money, if we agree that the money is from general funds, we could cap it. We could say no during the ad hoc committee, all of those things. Okay, but if we agree that it comes from general fund dollars, that will give much more flexibility of what the chamber can do. Because and probably reporting for the city and the chamber because it goes back ultimately to the feds. So and then we're going to move forward to this next item and discuss all those dollars. So I'm trying to add flexibility, the same amount of accountability with the same ad hoc committee. So if if I have one more person to support it, then it moves forward.
I just want to carve out the 473 remaining out of that money, the 473 that's outside of the budget.
Okay, so so.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Mayor, just a second. All I'm asking is that we carve out that 473 and set it aside. Not give to the chamber yet, just carve it out, set it aside so that we can have the discussion about all these other items they're going to present. Because if we don't do that and we get down to an item where say, okay, we're going to approve the 620,000 dollars for the skate park and we're going to approve the 600,000 dollars for the IT upgrades and all the things we're going to be on this next list here. Then we get into some other things that we could possibly use, which is like, you know, uh, you know, new boots for public works or whatever. I'm just making some.
Yeah, but that's off that's the problem.
No, it's not. No, it's not because we opened it up.
No, we don't. So I just trying to I'm just trying to hammer out the.
And and I'm not trying to do that, Mr. Mayor, so let me finish, please.
Okay.
So so if we don't carve that out, then we don't know. I can't make a decision on the next item about where that money is going to be spent because if I'm saying, okay, how much we up to now? Got the calculator, okay, are we going into that 473 now by by approving that expenditure? Because I don't want to do that.
That's that's why I want to make it general fund money so we don't have.
It has to be backfilled by the ARPA.
It automatically is.
Let me let me let me try to step in a little bit and clarify. Just let me recap where I think this is at. I think that the the ask is for an ad hoc. And what I'm hearing, at least from some of the council members is, although there was initial discussion to create that hoc and give the money to the chamber, at least the seed money, now it seems to be, let's create ad hoc and table or not table, but segregate a certain section of of funds. We're I don't think we should talk about the funding source at this point. Just the point is it's 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 funds that we know would be um, funds that you you want to keep live on the table to the extent ARPA is needed. And then you can move forward. So it's not giving it's not agreeing to give it to them. And then you could create the ad hoc, go through that exploratory process and have the chunk of money that's in item L2, which is 500 or 600,000, that's still unallocated. It can remain unallocated and that issue can get revisited when the ad hoc come back. I think that's what all of you would be okay with.
Nope, but that's I I understand your point, but I just want to try to give the chamber and the council and the city more flexibility. It's if if we're committing to the concept of what the chamber has proposed, the most flexible way to do it is general fund dollars.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. That wasn't.
I know that, I know that.
What I was saying either. I was just saying you don't have to, you could just allocate the ARPA dollars for now until that decision is decided. And then and then there will be budget amendments and to to figure out how exactly what is done. I'm not saying that it would be with ARPA, those ARPA dollars. And I I'm just trying to say.
Okay.
Because it's going to have to, it could be, it's going to be leveraged in one form or fashion is my point.
Yeah, just allocate the money. If you're proposing an allocation, then you could do that. But it but it but of course, we want the ad hoc to, you know, come back and say, we're all good. And then the money gets then the money gets given if that's what resolves comes out of it.
I have a quick question looking at the since we're on both topics now. The business assistance program.
We are we are not on both. Uh, you know what? I'm sorry, I apologize. I tried. I I'm going to open up to both topics now, so it's officially, everybody can talk about everything.
The business assistance program was 1.3 million?
Yes, sir.
And of that, there is remaining.
Uh, remaining um, a total of 504,000 dollars. There is also 66,000 dollars remaining from the nonprofit program. Um, if you add both of those to the 1.638 million of the unallocated ARPA funds, um, we have a total of 2.208 to spend. And that is the amount of money that we are looking to propose um, additional ARPA expenditures. After um, if those expenditures are approved, there will be 473,000 dollars left in ARPA. So you don't necessarily have to designate those dollars. They're available. You also have 8.4 million dollars in undesigned general fund balance. You have all the flexibility in the world. I think the question is the ad hoc committee and the work that they need to do to determine what's the right amount. At least that's what I'm hearing and I may have it wrong.
No, that was my understanding. Yeah, I I think the ad hoc committee can go forward and when we, you know, we're looking at things and if we discover something that's from, you know, hey, this could be funded from ARPA, but this would be better from here and to allow us to to spend most efficiently. Um, I'm I'm all for the flexibility. I have no problem with funding things out of the general. But I don't want to, you know, rule myself out of finding a legal creative expense for ARPA money.
But again, I appreciate Mr. Hines pointing that out with the unallocated. But again, I am not comfortable designating general fund dollars for this purpose at this time without knowing that we're going to backfill it from ARPA. So that again leads us back to discussion about having that ARPA there. Now, if we're going to leave that 473 just sitting there until we decide what to do, we decide to use the general fund and then we're going to backfill whatever. But I don't want to just go through the motions and have all the ARPA gone. And then we have a but then then the ad hoc gets together, hashes out some kind of whatever, and then it comes back and we go, well, you know what? I just don't think it's really, you know, general, you know, it just it's a budget item, blah, blah. You know, we don't think that maybe there's like 100,000 there.
There's 32 items on L1 that are, I'll generalize, are responsibilities or responsibilities of the Parks and Rec Fund and or the general fund. I think uh, anything from the ARPA fund is a gift. All every single item is a responsibility of the general fund in the in the shortest sense. So it's the auto backfill, in my opinion. Mr. Lozano, you had a question?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for clarification. Um, in terms of the ARPA, can you remind me when we have to have those encumbered, those funds encumbered?
Encumbered encumbered by December 31, 2024. Uh, so obligated by December 31, 2024 and then spent by December 31, 2026.
Okay. Thank you, that was good. I was that's a little sooner than I thought.
It just hit me. Um, yeah, I I and again, I I'm not going to belabor it, but I think that um, uh, my colleagues, um, both the mayor and Councilman Papinow can do a great job shepherding this thing through. And so um, that I again, I I since we're on both topics, I've looked at the staff report of L3 and and I can't imagine at this point wanting to to spend any more money than was recommended by staff and um, which leaves the balance of 473.
The Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I I want to make it clear to the council and to the public, none of these dollars are expended unless council approves. So the 473 isn't going anywhere. Um, it will be here for council's disposition at some point when council's ready to do that. All we're asking is that we're bringing these items before you that are recommendations to be taken from the 2.2 million that remains. And these are all projects that staff and I agree that these are critical projects for the community and for the city. And that's what what we have here. I'll be happy to go through the PowerPoint, but if you all are comfortable with.
I'd like to take one more shot at finalizing L3.
Sure, sure, no problem.
I have one question that might help. Would it be acceptable for the stipulation on the ad hoc is that that 473 is untouched until we have a spending plan created? Can't be touched for anything else. It stays there until we have our plan done.
If if that's, you know, I mean, you can't say I didn't try. Isn't democracy a beautiful thing? Um, I I at this point, I I it seems to be the the wish of the council that um, we have an ad hoc committee. Um, we.
What is your alternate proposal, Mayor? If that's not, I'm just confused on what yours.
I I am of the absolute belief that the most flexibility and that ARPA funds will automatically will be backfilling. In a in a few moments here, we will discuss how ARPA funds will backfill those general general fund dollars. If we commit to general fund dollars. If we commit to general fund dollars, it's going to give us more flexibility. I think it's the, the easiest thing to do for the city, for the chamber, for reporting. Uh, I think it's, it's, it just makes it easier. I mean, um, reading the memo that we got, you know, there's a lot of, there could be trouble in it, so I just, if you just sidestep it by committing to general fund dollars, you don't have to worry about all of that, it's just done with.
What are you proposing then?
What I proposed earlier, that we have an ad hoc committee, we make, you know, working through the MOU and, but it's just that we will commit to general fund dollars, and then we can open up and backfill with that $473. It's, it's, it's just a shell game of dollars, really, you just, you've got two piles, we're going to take from this one, or we take from this one, and we're going to fill, feed the same things, it's, it's.
But if we go with what you're proposing, just in all honesty, we could be talking about $20, or we could be talking about 120.
Well, as, as Councilman Papinow, you know, and Rich stated, you know, we want to be diligent about our, our funds, where they go, be responsible. I'm 100% on board with that, I, I just want to make it as easy as possible. I don't want to come back to the council and say, okay, we're going to go 100,000 with general fund, and we want to do this, but we're going to have to do A, B, and C, and D, because they want to do partial of this, you know, the chamber wants to do something here that's very important, and something here is very important, something here that's very important. But each one of those things are required by the federal government, that you must report it in this fashion, and you have to do it this fashion with this oversight, and you have to do this one with this fashion and that oversight. All of that is avoided if we just stick to general fund dollars.
I have a suggestion. So 473,000 is leftover, um, that is, is unallocated, even potentially after tonight, or likely after tonight. Mr. Boring, if I could ask you a question, do we have 473,000 in the bank that we could use to offset that if we need to?
Okay, we have like 8 million. I, I might overstep that a little bit, I'm sorry.
As I mentioned earlier, the general fund undesigned balance is about 8.4 million. Most of that is most likely cash. And so the flexibility is there. Should council desire to use one source or the other, or both sources? And no expenditures are made unless it comes for, for council, so those dollars sit idle until a decision is made.
So I, I only was confused earlier, because originally, Jay, you came out and stated, you stated a dollar figure, and then said an ad hoc for blah, blah. But now it seems different now, so I'm just trying to understand what you're proposing is all, that's all.
I, I was, yeah, you're correct, I did both, and I was trying to give as much, um, legal muster to the chamber, that they could perhaps commit their dollars from their bank account to the things they want to get moving on, because it's been four months, you know, and, and we're finally getting started in a, in a bad way to frame it, but, um, so, you know, I'd like to commit to, well, we could say a maximum of $500,000, or, you know, just general fund, but, you know, it's, we're, we're getting more and more confused, so. At this point, are we, we have a support for ad hoc committee, we have a, a support, uh, for an X amount of dollars? $473,000, if you want to use that, and, you know, if you want to frame it some other way. I'm just trying to finish that item, so.
Well, again, just to, I think, because Frank needs more real clarification, right? So, okay, go ahead, Frank.
I, I think that the most flexible is to not get into the weeds on, there may be ARPA that is necessary to deal with some of this, as far as, you need the flexibility for potential leveraging it, okay, I'm just going to, I'm just going to say that. And so it's, it's good, it's a good and appropriate and right to say, listen, we want to start with the ad hoc, and we want to allocate up to a certain amount of money, and the ad hoc will work on what, what that, what that looks like, I'm not saying, because even if general fund dollars are used, you need to still have tabled, segregated some portion of ARPA funds.
Right.
That's my point, like, you can't, you can't ignore that, because I'm not, it's not in lieu of the ARPA, the ARPA is going to be in the mix some, to some degree, is my point. And so I just think if you exclude ARPA, then all of a sudden, you will be going with just general fund dollars, and that ARPA dollars that you're going to be having discussion on L2 on, could get, or at some later date, could get, could get sucked up, and you want the flexibility to be able to, and so, I think what I'm trying to say is not at odds with what you're saying, and I think it's something that, you know, but I, I'm just concerned that if you want to have the ability to leverage those ARPA dollars, and you don't allocate it, then you won't be able to leverage it later, that's, that's the concern.
I would like to propose to allocate $473,000 of the remaining business program money to the program, set aside until which time our ad hoc committee meets and comes up with a favorable MOU, it's agreeable by all parties, and then we can decide to backfill or not backfill, but we have that leverage to do that, that's what I'm proposing.
Mr. Lozano, do you support that? Well, there's no vote, there's, there's no vote, there's general consensus, so do you, for direction, yeah?
What do we need to do to form the ad hoc, is that a, just a consensus?
We already, we. We did it earlier, we already agreed that me and Mr. Papinow would do it.
All right, so, um, I, I will support the ad hoc and moving forward and, um, not spending the 473,000, uh, until the ad hoc can come back with a spending plan and such.
And to clarify, this would be Papinow and the mayor, correct?
Correct.
What I agree to, yes.
Vice Mayor, uh, sorry, Sandu, do you support that?
I just want to make sure it's clear before I sport, uh, 473,000, we may make a commitment to before ad hoc committee, right? 473, this is leftover from the business, are, are we going to discuss that?
Yep.
Yeah, and this is, by no means a commitment that we're going to spend that whole 473, because we haven't discussed a budget or plan yet.
Yep, so.
It will be available.
So you support that, Vice Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Papinow, do you support it?
And, and I would say yes, and sharpen those pencils, because it'd be nice not to spend.
That make, that makes four, so that, that's consensus regardless of what I think.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanted to clarify that this is, that, that we should be looking at that, this is up to 473,000.
Of ARPA funds.
Of ARPA funds, okay, just want to make sure.
Correct? No, the TOT taxes, you know what, we have to, we actually, thank you very much. So you support the ongoing TOA tax during the MOU?
I think that's part of the, the ad hoc, that's all part of, no, no.
Just to make sure it's covered.
I'm clarifying.
Okay, so that's, that's a done deal, so now we can, uh, maybe take a five-minute break. Attention, everyone, I'd, I'd like to continue the meeting. Gentlemen, please. Thank you. Uh, next is L2, sorry, let me get my place, uh, ARPA Expenditure Plan Update and Fund Appropriations. Agenda report from Mr. Hines.
I have a, um, slide presentation, and, but I wanted to kind of set this up for everyone. Uh, staff and I are on hand to ask questions or answer questions about the individual items in this report. Tina, can you hit the next slide, please? Yeah, I have it, but. All right, so, uh, back in, um, the fall of 2021, we received 6.347925 million dollars in ARPA awards, and, um, for the folks out there who may not be familiar with ARPA, um, these are dollars that were given by the federal government, uh, to help for the, help in cities' recovery uh, from the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, the acronym that you see there is the American Rescue Plan Act, and that's, we've shortened it to, to just ARPA. And so when we initially received the, the initial allocation, and it was based on our population, and, um, a lot of calculations that myself and Mr. Boring did, um, we, again, we got those dollars, we brought the issue to council. Council approved 4.7 million dollars in ARPA expenditures over the last year and a half. Those expenditures include bucket truck for Public Works, the business assistance program, which you were, which you heard about earlier. Uh, we made a contribution to the community, uh, Consonis Community Services District, that is in support of our firefighters. We've, um, purchased, uh, Christmas lights and decorations, I'm sure everyone saw the improved decorations last December. Um, we've got field lighting control systems, we brought in an economic development consultant to help us with, um, uh, just, just to look at our economic development situation and, and sort of determine what, um, um, what businesses are required, what businesses are desired, and what businesses are needed. We also brought in, established a litter abatement worker, we had a nonprofits assistant grant program, which you also heard earlier. Made one-time payments to the essential workers, and these are all the folks who worked during the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, we had a parks consultant, um, we had a, um, a placer, a location-based analytics, and so this is more in line with, um, um, our economic development efforts. We've done some playground replacements, we've done pool repairs, um, we've done some premium payments as a result of our labor negotiations, tennis courts, and also a new vacuum truck, bless you. So in the previous slide, you saw that we had a small business assistance program, and so 68 small business owners in Galt were awarded funding for a total of 787 or 788,000 dollars in grants. A total of 12,000 was paid to a third-party financial consultant to review the financial documents associated with program applications. Um, at the conclusion of the program, roughly 504,000 dollars of the initial 1.3 million remains available for reallocation. So you heard me make the comment earlier, again, these dollars aren't designated, but they, if they are dollars left over after their particular purpose, then they remain available for council's reallocation. The next program is the COVID-19 Nonprofit Grant Program. A total of 84,000 in grant funds were distributed under the program of the initial 150,000 allocated. We had about 66,000 remains for council reallocation. So between the COVID-19 Small Business and Nonprofits programs, they had a savings of essentially 570,000 dollars. Again, that's 504 plus the 66, and so that is available for council reallocation to other ARPA-eligible expenditures. If we add these dollars to the 1.638 million that was unallocated in our initial allocation of ARPA funds, um, we have a total of 2.2 million dollars remaining to be reallocated. Staff is proposing and submitting to council for their consideration about 1.735 or 1.736 million dollars in additional ARPA expenditures. The first expenditure is for a new skate park, and so it's 620,000 dollars. This would be over at the Gora, um, uh, Aquatic Center, I believe. We're also proposing a new water slide, uh, for the city, as everyone knows, we had to take out our former water slide because of various concerns, and the city has been without a water slide for a while. Tennis court resurfacing, and apparently there was a shortfall in our initial request for the tennis court resurfacing, and so we're requesting another 85,000. The IT infrastructure replacement and upgrades, these are requested to help bolster our information technology network. Our network is at that point now where we're, we're having to upgrade it. We did have, uh, some issues a couple of years back, where we received roughly 600,000 dollars in insurance payments. However, those insurance payments, while directed at the IT infrastructure, were meant as a Band-Aid. They weren't meant to upgrade the entire system. And so I want everybody to understand, because sometimes we get questions, what happened to the insurance money? Well, we use the insurance money, but again, those were for Band-Aids, and as most insurance companies know, as you all know, they're about fixing the problem caused by the issue, they're not about making sure you're made whole. Um, so 650,000 dollars, and I've also let council know that I will be coming back for another 600,000 dollars, most likely this fall, because there is still more work to be done on the city's IT infrastructure. But this 650 gets us moving, um, in the direction we need to move. Uh, the next up is police department training. Uh, we want to allocate 30,000 dollars, um, to the Galt PD, and this will help put, uh, three recruits through the academy and, um, continue our ability to recruit and retain officers here in the city of Galt. There's also a request for rain gear for field personnel. Um, it doesn't rain that often, but if you've been around over the last couple of months, you realize we do get rain, and when it rains, it pours, and so, um, 10,000 dollars for rain gear, and I believe this will outfit most of the personnel in the Galt PD. Uh, there are a number of repairs, uh, that we have made, um, throughout the city, and so we are seeking reimbursement for these expenditures that have already occurred. And that, and those will be the next group of, um, requests that I'm reading here. So with the Chabola, we had some issues with the compressor, and that needed to be repaired. The HVAC system here in City Hall also needed to be repaired, we actually had to, I believe, council, one council meeting, because the HVAC went out on us. Um, the PD booking area also has HVAC issues. As you can, as you can all see, the theme here is we're all sort of dealing with, um, issues related to aging infrastructure and facilities. Um, the Hechmalt, um, Hecholt Water, uh, well, uh, we had issues with that well, and that cost about 18,000 dollars to repair. New locks for the PD, and as you can be well aware, that when, if there are any issues with security at the PD, they need to be addressed immediately. Uh, we also had a situation at Veterans Field where, um, I, I don't want to lay blame anywhere, but someone set fire to one of our panels. And we have our suspicions about who that is, um, but again, I don't want to lay blame, but we had to repair that, that, uh, panel in order to utilize Veterans Field. We've also purchased COVID tests, uh, this is through our HR department, um, for utilization of staff, uh, citywide. Um, even though COVID isn't in the news as much, we are still in, technically in the pandemic. Um, so that's about 4,200 dollars, the subtotal for all of those items is 1.736 million. After, um, that 1.736 million, should council approve it, we'll have 473,000, 195 dollars of undesigned ARPA funds for council's allocation. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, do I have comments from council? Is there a public comment?
Few months, we have a lot of important decisions that will be made. I understand there's a possibility of a grant that will expedite the completion of Walker Park. I know we obviously have the ARPA funds, and I know that we will have the incoming revenue from Measure Q. All are great things, and my understanding is all of these will drastically benefit Parks and Rec. The community has spoken. In November, we voted on a tax initiative because we feel so strongly about Parks and Rec. I was one of those people, I voted for Measure Q, and I strongly supported it. At that time, I was hopeful, and on. I strongly supported it. At that time, I was hopeful and honestly naive. I thought that funding was the only issue that Parks and Rec had. Five months later, after dealing with everything our organization has faced, I'm not so confident. As I said before, I believe that the city needs to invest in outside consulting. I see that there was a payment for Parks Consulting. I'm not sure if this specifically dealt with Parks and Rec. If not, I feel it's something very important. The council has continuously talked about being, in the meetings that we've gone to, they have discussed being proactive versus reactive. I am asking the council to be, please be proactive and to consider hiring someone outside to look at the way we run business. I'm not confident that we will not squander away the Measure Q funds based off the inefficiency that our Parks and Rec Department has. I also want to specifically bring up something I feel is out of date, and I think that we could easily purchase with our ARPA funding. Currently, we schedule fields, and we're able to view fields on paper format, so there's no way for any organization to see an up-to-date field schedule. Ironically, I can schedule the lights for the facilities using an app on my phone, but as of now, I have to fill out a paper, email it in, or I can drop it off, hand-deliver it, and then within four days, I'll receive notice to let me know whether or not the facility has been denied or approved. Also, if I want to see the schedule so I know what availabilities there are, I have to request a hard copy of a calendar, which is scanned and emailed to me. So again, there's no way to know what is currently on the schedule. It's honestly extremely confusing, and it's very difficult for organizations. I think that, as you can see, we purchased, it looks like the Control Link system with ARPA funds. I think similar scheduling software for our facilities would be a valid purchase. And again, just going back to, I strongly feel that this community holds Parks and Rec in such an important place. Again, we voted on a measure to raise sales tax just to benefit Parks and Recreation. I think it would be smart and a good investment for the city to look into how exactly we operate so we can ensure that those funds will be put to good use. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Baines?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to speak about the leftover remaining balance of ARPA funds to you guys. I know, you know, as Mr. Lorenzo has explained, where rest of the 2.2 million was expended. I believe it's extremely important that you guys invest into the local businesses. Where people make purchases, this brings in the tax dollars, and you guys, city will get money in the future, oncoming money. Not all of it being spent into stuff like that money will never come back from. I mean, it's important, we spend the money into businesses, so we generate other revenue that we can spend on other stuff that happens in the city, such as recreation and other important stuff for the city, for the PD, but it is very important for us to invest. There's a lot of leakage of the tax dollars that goes into Algro Van Lodi. I believe everybody agrees with that, but I believe enough is not being done. And I think the money that we were speaking earlier that should be awarded to the chamber, whenever I need help, I don't know who to go to city to get help, but I can call in the chamber and ask them question, and, you know, they will tell me for any grants or anything. Lot of these are business owners, the local business owners in the community that are very successful and great people. They help each other. Instead of us hiring an outside agency to do a review where we should spend our money, I think we should know how to run our house. You guys wouldn't like me to tell you how to run your house, right? This is our house. I think there's nobody better than a local business owner, a group of them can come to a table together and figure out where we should spend this money, what can generate more money for the city. So I would much likely appreciate if you guys can just come to a conclusion, not put too much red tape around coming to a conclusion and giving those funds to the chamber and not taking too much time, because I think we should be, you know, bridging the gap between chamber and the city, not, you know, make it a part by putting a lot of, you know, ifs and whats into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment?
Madison, did you have, you listed L2 and L3?
Yes.
You're good. Okay. Pat Byron?
Guys, ready?
Ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the city council. I just want to thank you guys for your time tonight. My name's Patrick Byron. I'm the owner of Wildwood Skate Shop in Lodi, former Parks and Rec Commissioner in the city of Ria Vista. Was on the Parks and Rec Commission when we got our skate park built. We're delighted to see tonight that you guys have allocated or maybe allocating some money for a new skate park. Galt is severely in need, and I think you'll find that it will be, if you build a good skate park, will be one of the most utilized facilities within the city. Skate parks serve our community. They serve our youth. They help reduce crime. They increase tourism. When we talk about spending $500,000 for Visit Galt, you could just put that money into a nice skate park, and thousands of people would come here to see the park and go to local businesses and all those other good things. So a skate park is an investment in our community. The longer you wait to build a park, the more a park is going to cost, but the good news is that if you build the right park and you do it correctly, it's a one-time expenditure, and that is why we think that these ARPA one-time funds are best for that. It's an infrastructure project that's going to benefit the city in the long term. I will say this, I do have some concerns. There is a process for building a skate park. That process usually doesn't start with selecting a designer without doing an RFP for an engineer or any of that. Skate parks need to be built out of concrete. They need to be permanent. Do not waste your money on a modular skate park. The city of Lodi has that issue now. The city of Lathrop had that issue. They ripped their park out. The city of West Sacramento did the same thing. They've ripped that park out. They're spending millions to build a new one. Do not build a modular skate park. I think if you find that if you put the money aside and you hire a good engineer, and with community engagement, a little bit of money can get you a lot. The park in Ria Vista is 6,500 square feet, concrete, permanent park, supported by the Tony Hawk Foundation, just under $500,000, fully built. And if you have a bigger space, there's a lot of things you could add that are very low-cost, like rails or ledges or just small skatable objects that could make a really usable park for a little bit of money. It would be nice if you built a bigger park, a regional skate park, something in the million to $2 million range, but I know that's not an option for every city. Those parks do tend to bring in pros, and that is the avenue of, skateboarding doesn't have a farm team like other sports. It's not supported by the local schools or by local Parks and Rec or any of that. If you want to become a pro skateboarder, you're dependent on pros coming to the park that you skate and seeing you and getting that exposure. So there is a need to build a good facility. I think you'll find that if you invest in a park, if you get the community involved, that it will be a very rewarding thing for this city. And when we talk about return on investment, I think you're going to see that 10-20 fold. When these kids stay out of gangs, when they stay off the street, when they don't get into drugs, when they don't end up homeless, when they don't end up in our criminal justice system, that's a win for our community. So thank you guys for doing this, and I just want to say, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you, if I may. Are you, are you familiar with the size of our skate park?
Yeah, it's pretty small.
The one you're proposing is how much bigger footprint-wise?
Uh, it, well-
Two, three times as big?
Uh, no, actually, the Ria Vista skate park would fit in the skate park you have now. And then, like I said, if there, there is an area there of grass where you could put a flat area that had some, flat ground skateboarding's a big thing now, too, so there are obstacles that are, like I said, less expensive to build, and, and they're beginner-friendly, that you can kind of put in one area and then make some more extreme stuff over here. And that's all stuff that you're going to hash out if you hire a, an engineer that is qualified to design a permanent concrete skate park, someone that's done it. There's companies like Wormhole and other companies, Site Design Group. So just, you know, you're allocating the money, put out an RFP for an engineer to come in. Let that engineer hold community meetings, find out from the community what they want in a park, bring that back, RFP for a builder, pick a builder, build the park, and then we'll all go have hot dogs at the ribbon cutting.
You are ready to go. Thank you so much. I, I, I really support his idea about a permanent cement park. If that's what we had built in the first place, we would, we would not be having this conversation right now about spending $600,000 to replace a broken one. So is there any comments by council?
On just ARPA in general?
Yep.
Um, yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Farmer, is there any more public comments since I let that go?
No public comments.
Thank you. Apologize.
No worries. Um, yeah, let me get my screen back up. Hang on.
So, so while you're doing that, Mr. Heinz, how many of these items, I have like five or six of these, I think five of them that are reimbursements?
Yes.
Is that correct, that there's five, or is there more than five that are reimbursed?
There are, here, let me go take you back to the list. So there are about $90,000 in reimbursements. If we start with the Chabola repairs, all the way down to the bottom of the list, that equates to, I think, $90,657. And so all of that would be reimbursements.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Solis, or I guess Mr. Heinz, it isn't whatever answer, the Veterans Field repairs, that's yet to be done, or are those a reimbursement?
Those are, that's a reimbursement.
Okay, so the, the fire-damaged fence over there that's still all messed up, that's not what that $16,000 is for? Because isn't the field, isn't the fence still fire-damaged?
This, yeah. Councilmember, the $16,000 does include the fence repair, too. So it's the electrical panel portion's already been done. The fence is still outstanding, but that is included in the $16,000.
It is included, so yet to be done, not complete. Okay, that's what I thought. All right. Thank you for that. Um, yeah, I really very much like the comments that were made by the gentleman that just spoke. You know, I, I am very supportive of the skate park. I mean, I, it's, I think it's, it's very important to the community. I know it's a big-ticket item, but I think it's, it's much needed. As a youngster, that was what I did. We didn't have a skate park in Galt. That would have been like amazing, but unfortunately, it was Galt back then, and so, um, I, but I do am concerned a little bit with, because I, I've, you know, really wanted to see something at Walker Park. There'd been discussion when we were doing the designs for Walker Park, that there was an area we could carve out to do a cement park. My only concern would be if we do spend this money now for that, and Walker Park is pushing forward, which I know we're hoping to see that maybe by 2025, is that conversation going to be for not? Because we're going to be like, well, we just spent that money over here on this skate park. We don't need to do one over here. So I don't want to spend money twice. So I am very concerned about what the gentleman said. I do believe a cement park is, is, based on what he said, and I agree, I know people that use the park in Lodi, and it's, there's only a certain life expectancy on these ramps, these modular wooden ramps. So I think we should do our due diligence on that piece to definitely do, maybe suggest, and if he's knowledgeable, and I, I know I'm not throwing rocks at Mr. Solis, but I know Mr. Solis isn't an expert on skate parks, neither am I, but things have changed, but maybe if we could reach out to the community, maybe get some, some leads from this gentleman about who to contact, whatever, maybe that would help us maybe not only save money, but maybe get something more for our dollars. So I just want to throw that out there. The water slide replacement, so is that repairing the water slide, or that's replacing the entire thing? Can you please clarify that?
Yeah, councilmember, that is to replace it. The existing slide is, we would not recommend trying to repair it. No, it would be cost prohibitive.
Okay. I thought, I thought it was mentioned that it was a repair, and so I see it says replace, so okay. Tennis court short resurfacing, does that include the, the surfacing, but also includes the, the integration of pickleball courts on those?
Correct.
Right? Okay. IT infrastructure, I know we went over that a little bit. The, so, I mean, we've, we've touched on all this. I appreciate Mr. Heinz and the IT director, or the IT, I forget his name, Robert, is it Robert?
Yes.
Yeah, it was very thorough, you know, overview of the IT. As someone who was in IT for many years, I appreciated the thorough on that, and it was a little disappointing to see we had spent a lot of insurance money to disband aid, but we're still in dire need of these upgrades. But, you know, a lot of that was, was labor. So when we had our cyber attack. The only thing I would like to add to this is I, just generally speaking, and I don't know where it would come from in this, but I really, really would like to advocate for having some of that leftover nonprofit money that was left over. There was the $66,000. I mean, maybe it doesn't have to be $66,000, maybe it could be $50,000, but I really think I would like to see that put back into the nonprofits. I think we could maybe split that in half and do half of it as part of our, a part of our sponsorship program that our nonprofits apply for every year. I mean, we have a lot of nonprofits in town that apply for that, for that money every year, and it's, it's, you know, every little dollar counts. And then we could maybe, you know, take the other half and have it for next year. I think that would be a big deal for the community. It would really help get that money back into the community the way it was intended originally as part of that $150,000. So other than that, I would like to see if we can carve out some of that somewhere. Where, you know, I don't know, but that's, that's just what I would like to see. But other than that, that's the only questions I really have at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mr. Pompano?
Go ahead. Yeah, just real quick comments. I am happy to see what I think a pretty good balance of outward-facing things that the community is going to be able to enjoy, hopefully extremely soon, and balancing that with some needs, some dire, desperate needs, and, you know, infrastructure, IT infrastructure, people don't appreciate until three years ago, when it didn't work anymore. And I definitely, we need all the insurance we can that we're not going to turn into, or, you know, going to be hit again, like so many cities around us have recently. I think Modesto's the last one I heard of, but there's probably been others. So I think it's, I think it's a good, a good balance of, of filling our needs and giving the community some things that can be put into use right away.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, most of my questions have been answered. I do get a lot of requests for pickleball. Asked about that earlier. I, I agree, there is a good balance here. It certainly, appreciate all the staff and their briefings on, on these items, specifically the IT infrastructure replacement and upgrades, and I think that that will make life a lot easier, not only for staff, but certainly for our public and their access. And so that, and again, you know, I think we're, we're, we're doing a good job with the balance, and, and it's nice to be able to see us use some of the ARPA funds to backfill some of our urgent needs that we had. So, yeah, and, and I agree, the skate park is likely one of those things that we're going to have to plan out, and we have, I'm sure Mr. Director Solis has a list of people to call on that have come to public comment over the years to talk about it. So certainly reach out to that community to, to get some guidance. One thing I would ask about is, two things, and I don't have to have the answers tonight, but when the last time we did a park master plan, Park and Rec master plan, and when was the last time that we updated a strategic plan related to Parks and Recreation? If that is out of date, I would suggest using whatever kind of funding we need to really do that outreach. I happen to be involved in one of those in the former agency, and it was really, really found to be effective, and we learned a lot from not only the community, but, but certainly the other communities that weren't being affected directly by Parks and Rec. So I would just throw that out there as something to think about as we move forward. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comment, you know, new skate park, this is important, you know, this is, and also Gora Park, a slide replacement. Yes, I'm agree with that. The, my just, as a question, these, all these things, is, this is just the approximate, it's not the exact figure, right?
These figures are approximate, and there's enough conservative and conservatism in these numbers to ensure that we don't have to come back and ask for more. If best-
If best case scenario, there may be dollars left over. But for right now, I want to make sure that these numbers are bolstered enough that we have all of the flexibility needed to get these things done without having to come back for more, like we've done with the tennis court resurfacing.
So all this expenditure plan is include that we have a leftover from the small business, I think eighty-four thousand dollars, then we have a leftover sixty-six thousand dollars from nonprofit. So that money is already used on that plan.
Right, so we've got five hundred thousand left over from the business program, sixty-six thousand left over from the nonprofit program, that combined with the one point six million that we had left over from our initial allocation, gives us the two point two oh eight million that you see there, and so that's our beginning number. And so all of these items are deducted from that two point two million. Was that clear? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
So four hundred seventy thousand dollars, that's, at this time, that's the leftover from ARPA.
Exactly.
If that expenditure plan, we might be future, we might be left over more than that, right?
Possibly, possibly, depends on how these expenditures go, because as the gentleman mentioned, you know, once we get into the skate park, you know, depending on the design, and this will be an inclusive process between staff and the council as we move forward with this. And same with the water slide replacement, these are things, these are major capital expenditures, so, you know, we think we've got it dialed in as far as the amount of dollars that we need, but you just never know.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. So from the mission state of the city, the city is committed to providing exceptional public services and facilities that sustain a responsible, responsive to the needs of the community in honest, efficient, and fiscal responsible manner. So I say that because all of the many events that I participated in at the Littleton Center, you know, you tell people, hey Lions Club, you can use the Littleton Center, but by the way, the lights don't work right, the speaker system doesn't work right, you don't have a functioning kitchen, none of the stoves works, and the refrigerator doesn't work either. So basically, they have a shell, and they must provide. So I'm a little surprised that that's not on there as much as it gets used by the city. I know it's a huge expense at eight hundred thousand, but I feel like we need to start chipping away at that. I would also say that it's about the seventh item down on parks on the second list, community park baseball fields, considering the trouble that we've had with baseball recently, I would really like to see that used, so I would suggest that, starting in the middle there, there's eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars, and everything below that is reimbursement, which is roughly eighty thousand dollars. I would prefer to, and I would like to say this in the middle, like, you know, we're not trying, I'm not trying to pick winners and losers here. If any one of these items comes up on a general fund agenda item, I'd be happy to support it. I'm just trying to, you know, give my opinion on this. So from the Chipola repairs down is all reimbursements, that's eighty thousand. I'd like to see at least, I would personally, I would just drop all of that, because those are reimbursements, it's already paid for. I'd like to see the community park baseball field addressed. I know we can't touch, the Littleton Center's like eight hundred thousand, that's a huge chunk, and we're not going to get into that, but I would like to see, maybe you could touch on something else, I don't know. But any other thoughts by anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, on four eighteen, the City Treasurer and I will be presenting possible financing scenarios utilizing the Measure Q dollars, which might address some of the issues that you just mentioned. On our sort of list to deal with is Walker Park and the completion of Walker Park, as well as the possible renovation of the Chipola and Littleton Centers. And I'm talking complete renovations. So what, right now, I'm working with architects to find out what that dollar figure will be. But those are sort of the top priorities, and but, again, the ultimate priority list will be determined by the council. But like I said, on the eighteenth, I believe that's our next council meeting, we'll be presenting financing scenarios.
Thank you. Okay, so just doing some basic math, you know, if we drop the bottom four, we could cover the community park fields. Considering what's been done in baseball, I think we need to support that as much as possible. That and swimming is a stretch everywhere. If, you know, my fellow council members don't agree, then that's just the way it is, like the last time around. So there is a need for a vote on this, correct?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you may, just based on your comments, thank you, Mr. Hines, for elaborating on that list of Measure Q. I'm eager to see that money get to work. It's going to be a large amount of money, so if we can, if we're going to have all those creative finance options brought to us, then I do think we're going to be knocking off some of these things that are on this Parks and Rec list. There's so many there, it's hard to, I do agree with the baseball need. I don't know if, like, using that forty thousand just for that baseball. The softball issue is really the bigger thing than the baseball, actually, to be honest with this point. I wish that maybe there was something on there to help that, but I think the community park baseball field or any of these other things here, I think will definitely be soon addressed with this financing option that's going to come back to us. What's not going to be part of Measure Q is those nonprofit dollars. And like I said, I know a lot of the nonprofits didn't even apply for that stuff. I think it's such a small amount of money, even if it's just fifty grand. If we could just peel off fifty grand, I mean, you wanted to drop those last items, which is eighty grand, so maybe fifty of that eighty could be reappointed back into the nonprofits through our sponsorship program, and then the other thirty go towards one of these things or something, but I just like, because Measure Q is only going to be for Parks and Rec stuff, and it can't be used for nonprofit stuff.
I would be okay with that. Does anyone else have an opinion, at some point we've got to get to consensus?
Yeah, I would agree with that, I would just ask Councilman Farmer, what, it being appointed, that being allocated nonprofits, just in that, I think it's our next item, or is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, because then they all have a fair chance at applying for it. So right now, you know, we can up, clearly there's an ask greater than what we have budgeted, right, on the next item?
Right, right.
Clearly costs have increased, you know, road closures have significantly increased, which we'll be talking about, so. So I think if we could use that money to up that amount that's there and do it next year, then that gives all these people free chance at applying for that money, and it goes right back into those nonprofits, which is where we originally intended it, right?
And just for clarification, we're not making a decision on that next item tonight, we're hearing the proposals, correct? Okay, yeah, I'm good with that, I think, and that gives us some time to touch base with some of the nonprofits that are out there, that I'm sure won't have a problem with that, but just want to make sure that they didn't have anything else brewing that they were thinking, so.
So what is the council's pleasure regarding the resolution that's at the back of the staff agenda for the one point seven three five million? Is it, do we just allocate one point seven three five or one point seven three six million minus sixty-six thousand? And you'll leave it to my discretion to spread those dollars? How do you want to play it?
I think, well, I, just real quick, I'll just pipe in through my thought. I would be okay, I guess, with using discretion, I kind of like the mayor's point about not using those things that have already been paid for and taken care of, I hate to pick winners and losers, like you said, but I also do think the skate park money, there could be, there probably could be money saved on some of all of these things, so who knows where after we do these things, there's money left. But I, yes, I would like to peel off the sixty-six out of that one point seven three five, that's what I'm asking.
So I'll go one more favor, do you want us to just eliminate all of those items that have been paid for already by the general fund, roughly ninety thousand dollars, and just reduce this amount by ninety thousand dollars?
I would like to leave the further repairs of Veterans Field in, because that fence needs to be fixed, it looks terrible. So that's sixteen thousand, so if you can peel that off, that would leave what, seventy-four thousand or in something? So I think we're close to the sixty, maybe the locks for the police to, well, that's not, the locks for the police. All I'm saying is, I'm looking for sixty-six out of that ninety, I don't.
That's all been paid for, they're asking for reimbursement, that's all been paid for, it's all done, so you don't have to worry about those details.
Right.
So all I'm saying is, I would be okay with peeling off all of the items that are reimbursement requests and saving that until, I guess, after the next item.
Okay.
Does anyone else support that?
Mike, any issues? Okay.
Mr. Farmer, Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, again, you know, we're, I think what we're doing is just trading one dollar for another, but I think it's a good idea, because we do have that next item coming up, and I was concerned, not to get into it, but like was pointed out, there's a lot more requests than there is budgeted money, and so that might help with that, so.
Mr. Papinow? Okay, so then do I have a motion to approve the top six items to be funded by ARPA funds, and the remaining items to be put on pause? Is that clear enough?
Yeah, that's clear enough. Now, what I don't know is if these increases, or if these repair, or if these expenditures that are currently hitting the general fund have wreaked havoc on the departmental budgets. Now, for HR, for instance, that four thousand dollars, because that budget is so small, I'm a little worried about that budget going over. So in the event that we sense that some of the appropriations have been exceeded or about to be exceeded, I'll come back here with a remedy for that. But for right now, it looks like the resolution in the back has been reduced from one point seven three five million, including the skate park, the water slide, tennis court, IT infrastructure, PD training, and PD rain gear, and also whatever remains for the veteran fields, veteran field repairs.
Yeah, Mr. Hines, could I clarify, that's what I'm saying, that Veterans Field is a partial reimbursement, but yet some of it is not yet performed, the repair of the fence that's all melted. So with what he said about the concern with the PFCR reimbursement for HR, if we just peeled off that sixteen, because that's still yet stuff to be done, we peel off the four thousand, that's taken twenty, so we take twenty off of ninety, that leaves us seventy, that's the sixty-six thousand essentially that I was asking for, so I think we're still good.
Okay, so everything except for the Chipola, City Hall HVAC, PD booking, hitch halt, water, well repair, locks for the PD?
Correct.
Everything else is included? Okay. Mr. Attorney, do we, we have to modify the resolution?
Yeah, you have to modify it, but you don't need to bring it back, because you're just removing those five or six things in the middle, and the rest, the resolution is being adopted as you just amended.
Do I have a motion to approve the items as presented by the city manager?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lozano, seconded by Councilman Farmer, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes five zero, I'm sure everybody's a bigger fan of that portion of democracy. Okay, so with that, man, that was something else. Okay, so we move on to L four, subject, City of Galt Special Events Sponsorship Program Preview for Fiscal Year 2023 slash 2024. And if there's anybody here from a nonprofit, they do not have to submit a card to speak, just be orderly. Is there any, is there any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I apologize, excited about moving forward, I guess. My mistake, ma'am, if you could wait till after the presentations, that would be proper. Thank you, Armando.
Yes.
While we're getting Armando and Jackie set up, a couple of things I need to mention. First of all, I wanted to give a public thank you for Amy Mendez, for her work with the nonprofit program and the business programs utilizing the ARPA dollars. It was her and one of our local accountants that drove that, so that was an incredible piece of work, and a lot of work for her. The other shout out I want to give is to Ms. Garcia over there, and a few folks attended the Saturday Market this past Saturday. That vision, while collaboratively reached with the council and the staff, that vision came to fruition because of Jackie's efforts, and we appreciate you for making that happen month in and month out, so thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. At this time, you guys should have received some amended PowerPoint presentations that will reflect the PowerPoint presentation that I'll be presenting tonight. In 2017, the City of Galt created a special event sponsorship program. The purpose of this policy is to set forth guidelines and criteria governing and granting the city funds our in-kind services for supporting local festivals, special events, and community projects or programs. With that, we have received eight special event sponsorship requests for fiscal year 2324, and we're asking for you to provide direction to staff in regards to the events' monetary amounts and in-kind contributions. So far, the community impact for these special events has been developing communication and social networks within the community. Enhancing community spirit creates a memorable and impact experience, and provides Galt residents with more opportunities for fun and inexpensive activities. Our sponsorship policy goal and objectives are to promote the City of Galt as a desirable place to live and visit and do business, in addition to promote the City of Galt as a visitor destination and attract tourism associated with revenue to the city, enhance the quality of life and well-being, advance the city's commitments and pride in being a multicultural community, encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride, and promote cultural and artistic awareness among the citizens. This also aligns with the City of Galt's mission statement and our strategic plan. Our sponsorship request policy is not to exceed five thousand dollars per event unless the City Council approves a higher amount, which it sets that entire budget for the special event sponsorship program. We also included soft cost examples, our rental facility fees, and any staff costs during regular scheduled hours. Hard cost examples are janitorial service, any staff costs outside work schedules, security service, and tangible items. Below is just an overview of the applications that were submitted, and I'll go into more detail in the next slide for each one of the events. So the Galt Teen Center had submitted an application for a movie night by the tower, which was going to be, is going to be located at the teen center, scheduled from spring to fall and free of no charge. They're expecting anywhere from forty to fifty attendees, and they asked for city sponsorship of three thousand dollars. This would include purchase of a projector, movie screen, seating, and supplies for movie rights. The Farm to Fork Dinner, which is located on the Forest Street Promenade, scheduled on September sixteenth, is a ticketed event. They are asking for sponsorship of police service costs, which would be two police officers at nine hundred and thirteen dollars. The Chamber of Commerce asked for sponsorship for their Old Galt Festival, located on city street closures, scheduled on September twenty-third, which would be a free community event, anticipating three thousand people, and the cost would be fifteen thousand one forty-four. The hard cost would be police service costs, and this is the amended slide, of five thousand five twenty-eight, and the estimated public work street closure is the nine thousand six fifteen. The Wine Beer and Food Event is at Littleton Center, this is a ticketed event, scheduled on February second, with three hundred people anticipated, and the cost would be eight thirty-six ninety. Soft closure is the seven fifty, and then janitorial services. The Business Expo, which is put on by the Chamber of Commerce, is, would be scheduled at Littleton Center, May of 2024, free community event, and the cost would be for a facility of Littleton, and it's seven fifty. The Homecoming Parade is asking for street closures, September twenty-ninth, free community event, expecting five thousand, and the cost for police services would be thirteen seventy fifty-two. Galt High Alumni Dinner is at Littleton Center, October seventh, this is a ticketed event for five hundred people, at twelve seventy is the total, the rental fee is included, as well as security service cost. Le Heim of Galt is asking for their trick or treat on Forest Street, city street closure scheduled on October twenty-eighth, and it's a free event, expecting. LaHeim of Galt is asking for their Trick or Treat on Fourth Street, City Street closure scheduled on October 28th, and it's a free event, expecting 5,000 people, and this is for public works street closure cost at $7,0772. Your amended slide will be in addition to this one, and it will reflect on the staff report. The soft cost is the $2250, and the new hard cost would be $28,808. We also have invited organizers to come and speak on behalf of their events, and we'll call them up if they'd like to speak at this time. So we have the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Kat Seebolt, and I am the new Membership and Events Manager for the Galt Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to talk about our special events grant applications for the Old Galt Festival and Wine Beer and Food Event. The Old Galt Festival is a rendition of Galt's 150th Birthday Celebration that took place in 2019. It is a free event for our community that celebrates the rich history of, excuse me, Galt. The Old Galt Festival is seeking a grant in exchange for sponsorship for road closures and security. This event will feature entertainment performances, educational displays, fun interactive activities for kids, food, and drinks. It will also include a kickoff dinner the night before the event. It will bring together a large group of organizations and nonprofits here in town and allow them to fundraise in a number of ways. For example, the Rotary and Lions Club will be selling hot dogs and hamburgers. Real Life Church will be hosting our Midway Carnival Games, and local sport teams and youth organizations will have the opportunity in volunteering, running our beer garden in exchange for tips and a profit sharing donation to their organization. This event will send around community and will bring together a larger variety of local nonprofits and organizations to create a free-to-attend event for citizens of Galt and guests from neighboring cities. The Wine Beer and Food Event is a tasting event where local restaurants, wineries, and breweries show off their menus to attendees, which include Galt citizens and guests from neighboring cities. As you know, this event kicks off the city's Winter Bird Festival and serves as a fundraiser for our high school scholarship awards. For this event, we are asking for use of the Littleton Center and security. After talks with Armando and Jackie, we would like to rescind the requests related to the Business Expo, as we plan to partner with them to host this event in conjunction with a Saturday Market. We hope that you value these events and the benefits they provide our city and our citizens, and hope to have your support in approving our grant requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback on what Kat said real quick. First of all, I'm so proud of her. She just started with us on Monday, and she's going to be fantastic. You guys are going to love her. Regarding the Old Galt Festival, the chamber and our volunteers are willing to do anything we can to help reduce the cost of those road closures. I know that's a pretty significant number. So if there's anything we can do, labor or otherwise, to help with that, we'd absolutely be willing to do that. Thank you.
No, just kidding. Okay, I, I would just like to ask one question. The road closures for one is 10 grand, then 1,300, and then 7,700. It seems a wide swing, so it also seems like an awful lot of money to put up some ballards or whatever it may be.
So, yes, Mayor, as far as the, the road closure costs, they're detailed out as for, as far as staff, labor costs. Typically, these events are after hours, so it's typically at an overtime rate. You know, if it's a holiday or something, that, that may even be a bit different. But you've got your, your, you know, all the cones, barricades, the stands, the flags, the signs, so they're broken down by cost. What I would tell you, and it, it depends on the event essentially, as to what area needs to be, you know, closed. And so there's a, you know, we look at that, we, we determine what detour, you know, how to detour traffic around the event. And so that's going to determine, you know, how many streets are affected, so how many signs, how many cones, all those kinds of things. And then there's the, you know, the setup, the tear down, that kind of thing, and what vehicles are needed as well. So, so all of that to say, I know it seems like a lot. What I would tell you is we did get a third-party quote on one of the events, and I think it was the Trick or Treat event, and I think it was about $500 cheaper than, than staff's cost. So there, there was a, you know, a fairly close parity there, if you will. So while we may be slightly more expensive than a third-party, we're not, you know, out of line, so to speak, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask?
Absolutely.
Is that why the, is that what the reduction was in the street closure for the Fourth Street is because the, they're going to use the third-party, or is that?
No, so the, the street closure on the Fourth Street is, there was an initial number given to Parks and Rec, and, and that was based on one of our staff who actually is out of town on vacation this week. And so when the request for the breakdown came through, a different staff member was breaking it down and noticed that there were, you know, some, some charges that could be reduced in terms of the number of items of equipment, and, and I think there was one or two staff member time reductions as well. So that was that change that dropped that.
So could you clarify? And I'm looking for the, the, thank you for providing the detailed time and material. Mr. Heinz sent that to me a few days ago. I just want to get some clarification, so I just understand this is, that cost, and I'm going to use the, again, I know this cost is now cheaper, was $8,600, now it's 77, but I'm just going to use theirs as an example, because that's the first one I pulled up. You, you sent me two, but things like, you know, you have six employees on here with the overtime rates, and I get that it's overtime, it just seems like six people to unload the barriers. I mean, I'm just kind of like, I've seen them unload them. I've seen the market people do their thing, and they don't seem like they have that many people. But tell me, explain me how, are we buying or renting, because it says, so it has a bunch of flags and stands, so it says, "Road Closed Ahead." You need eight of those, and they're $30 each for a total of $240, and then it has another sign, "Left Detour," and it has quantities and numbers. So are we renting those signs, or do those signs already exist in Public Works? Explain that.
So they, they already exist in Public Works, but those would be essentially rental rates for replacing them at some point? Yes.
So let me, alright.
From a third-party vendor.
Okay, and so the eight, so you have 100 cones at $5 apiece, which is $500. You have type three, you have A-frames, 14 A-frames at $5 apiece. So essentially what you're saying is for a one-time event to block the street for the Fourth Street Trick or Treat, you're essentially charging them replacement costs, although those items are going to be used for multiple events. So how is that fair? I don't understand the fairness in that. You own the items, to me, and let me finish. You own the items, to me, it seems unfair that there should just be labor involved to transport those items and do all that stuff, but you're charging us to basically rent the items which taxpayers essentially have already purchased and you own, right?
Correct, but there is a replacement cost. It's the same as, you know, for any other piece of equipment, essentially. You charge yourself essentially a rate, whether that's a daily rate or an hourly rate or whatever. So that way, when it comes time to replace that, the wear and tear that happens to that item or that vehicle or whatever it may be, you've got the money in the bank to replace it when the time comes. So that's essentially what it's reflecting.
And this is, and these, and these are mainly the differences between, because I noticed last year, the Fourth Street, they were only charged like 2,000, and this time it's 7,700. I was like, well, why is it so much more in one year?
Yeah, I think it was actually about 4,050, Councilmember, last year. And so when I looked at the rate for the labor itself, and our total this year was about 4116, so yeah, not much difference. I think it was less than $100 even difference. So as far as the labor goes. Last year, the direction that we had received was to just give quotes on the labor and not on the equipment and materials. And so this year, we were asked to include the labor, or to include the equipment and materials also. So that's the biggest change in the numbers from last year, if you will, versus.
Because they were significant, this is why.
Mr. Farmer?
If you just look at an apples-to-apples labor, it's pretty close.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
But I'm still asking questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. And then the service trucks, we have like four trucks required. I, I just, again, I'm only going off what I see, because I, you know, I, my place of business is right there, so I see when these things go up and they go down. And again, it just seems a little overinflated. And, and again, I mean, if this stuff ends up being covered by the, by the in-kind, then I guess it's, really doesn't, but I'm just, I, I think, I ask these questions because if some organizations would like to be like, hey, because how can we save this cost for our event? Is this, maybe it's this 500 less money that they have to, because if they're not covered, then it's like $500 less that maybe, you know, you know, whatever the event is, they have to generate through sponsorship in order to cover that cost. Because they're, they're trying to be real economical with their money, you know, when they put an event on. So that's all I'm suggesting, is if there's any way, like the mayor, like the mayor asked earlier, or that Ms. Owning, or Delbrugue mentioned, is if there's anything that, that, that these organizations can do to help, if they want to, to help minimize that cost, we'd love to provide that opportunity.
Yeah, that, that could be a challenge as far as just not knowing what to do, and then when you have, you know, essentially non-city employees out in the right of way, if there's a liability potential for the city, that, you know, we may want to, you know, try to avoid, if we can. I appreciate the offer kind of thing. You know, you have to have, you know, certain training and stuff to deploy this type of equipment and things. You know, just being aware, awareness when you're out in, in the roadway and things. What I would tell you, though, is these are, you know, we try to conservatively estimate these costs, because as, as the city manager said at the last item, you know, the last thing we want to do is tell somebody like, oh, you know, it's going to cost more money kind of thing. I would say that these are conservative, and I would expect that the cost would end up, you know, somewhat less, so.
So the footprint, I'm assuming the footprint of the Trick or Treat, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it's not, but maybe the, I would say the new market footprint, the new Saturday Market footprint is similar to say the Trick or, the Chunk or Treat, or Trick or Treat, sorry. So does every time that we do the Saturday Market, is it costing $7,700 to block those streets?
I would have to check back on that. I would, you know, I wasn't prepared to respond to that. I don't know what, what, you know, charges have been, but we could work with finance and, and parks to determine what those were. My understanding is what's proposed this coming year for the Trick or Treat or Chunk or Treat is that they were looking to expand the area to a portion of C Street versus last year. So it is a bigger area, so it does require more, you know, equipment, materials, time to set up.
Yeah, I'm just only trying to, to draw a, a, you know, connection between every time we have a first, first of the month Saturday Market, if it's costing us $8,000 to close the streets, because I think it's a similar closure. It's probably very similar if you, I mean, maybe not exactly, but if you, amount of signs and stuff is probably very similar, so.
And my understanding, and Armando may weigh in on this too, is I think what we've kind of worked out at this point is we did the first few, and now I think primarily Park's staff, with a little bit of oversight from Public Works, is now deploying those. We kind of set it all up, you know, in, in the day or two ahead of the Saturday Market. So the vehicles are all loaded and everything ready to go kind of thing. And I don't know if the footprints are the same or not. He may be able to speak better to that.
They might be doing it. They're, they're, they're basically trying to help their own department out by doing some of their own, I guess.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Are your guys available to do the street closures? I'm just kidding. That's all. Thank you, Mike, for clarifying that stuff. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, sir. I'd like to let the public speaker go. My apologies once again, ma'am.
My name is Rebecca McAllister, and I'm with the Galt High Alumni Association. And every year we do our annual dinner. This year will be our 33rd annual fundraising dinner. I want to thank the committee for giving us a, a donation for the, oh dear, where is it? I'm not really, the city grant, Galt grant, we, allowed us to have $4,000. Because we, we, the money we raised with our dinner and our raffle go to scholarships for the Galt High School District seniors. And because of COVID, we, we lost $4,000, because we couldn't have the dinner. So that $4,000 helped make it up that, for the next year that we could give out more scholarships this year than we could last year. And I really appreciate that opportunity that we could do that. At our dinner, like I said, our goal is to raise money. So if, if any of the expenses, the rental of the building, the police, security, whatever is, is available, that would be wonderful. I'm feeling in for someone else who does this, so I'm a little bit nervous. I'm not.
You're doing great.
What to do. But anyway, I was just hoping that whatever services you could provide as non, to the nonprofit, as, at no cost, would be greatly appreciated. And like I said, we look forward to doing this every year. We have people that come from out of state. Last year, we had six people come from out of state and 31 people from out of the area completely. That means they were coming and spending the night and using the motel rooms, using the restaurants, and, and, you know, these are Galt alumni, so they, most of the, with their spouses, most of them have grown up in this area. They went to high school here. They went to grammar school here. I'm an alumnus. I didn't move here until I was in the seventh grade. My husband was almost born in Galt. His mother was born in Galt and went through the, the, the high school, the grammar schools and everything. And so this has a real special place in my heart, because this is my community. I moved out because of my husband, we had a job somewhere else, we're back in the community. And my grandchildren, three of my grandchildren have graduated from Galt High School, two from, from Liberty Ranch. So we've got several generations that have attended the, the schools in this area, and so to be able to raise money, to give scholarships out for the students is, is our goal. And the more we can save from having to spend, the more we can raise and give out. So we're very excited about doing the dinner, and I appreciate your, your time. Like I said, I'm not sure, I didn't prepare with a speech or anything, so this is off the top of my head. But I do really appreciate all that you do, and realize that it is greatly appreciated to the alumnus who come. They look forward to it every year. We've done tours of the, of the high school, which is new to us, because that's not the one I went to. But we go to a game if it's, if it's, if there was a game going that weekend. So we're just excited to be able to be, to give back to the community, especially to the students, the high school students. So thank you very much for your time. And it was a very interesting meeting. I'm glad I got.
Thank you, thank you. You hit a hot one. Mr. Splendario, I don't recall, but we're almost at four hours. Do we need to make any motions to extend it past 10?
It's at 11:00. So we have a whole another hour.
Sweet, here we go. All right, is there another, another speaker? Mr. Bozeman, you have a word to say?
I'll just touch base on this. Are these funds we're talking, coming out of the general fund, or are they coming out of Parks and Rec?
Mr. Farmer?
No, I can't ask questions, so I guess I'll leave you with that, just a question. But to me, that, that's where I'm wondering why the funds are. And I got to say, renting cones and renting trucks, does that mean when their budget, and they need a new truck, that it's not going to come and ask for an increase in general fund money to buy new cones and buy new trucks, since we're renting them? Do we accumulate it like a business would?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Solis, is it '06 money? Just to clarify his question. It's '01.
Gail Weber is next.
Good evening, everyone. You're probably as tired as I am. So I do want to make one clarification. There's only 1,000 people, anticipated attendance, not 5,000 that was on there. This is based on last year. We figured we served about 800 kids. We started this event in 2020. It was basically started from a meeting with Amy Mendez and the Old Town Galt Merchants. I think Sam and Shelley from Backstreet Alley suggested a trick-or-treat event, and I kind of took the reins on this. In the first two years, we did not close the street. We just had the kids on the sidewalk, because most of the businesses are on the east side of the street. After having some conversations with our previous Sergeant Walton, we decided it would be safer to ask the city to close the street, because we've got little kids running all over the place. It went from about 300 kids to 500 kids, and like I said, we served, based on the amount of trick-or-treat bags that LaHeim gave out, we served 800 kids last year. We're anticipating 1,000 this year. We had about 30, 35 businesses participating. We were able to put them across the street, and then the businesses that are, are actually there just opened their doors. We went down C Street a little bit to almost the alley near Streetslam and stuff, because near Streetsland and stuff, because the barber shop in Streetsland participated. So we were kind of wanted to include that block in this whole thing. It's a free community event. It is a ton of fun. Um, I did request a golf cart, because I've walked anywhere from 11 to 15 miles that night. Um, if it's too much money, we'll take the golf cart out. I don't really need it. I'll figure it out somehow. Um, but this is like one of the few events that we have on, on 4th Street anymore that's like free to the community, and I would like to continue it. Um, like I said, for safety reasons, we are asking the street to be closed. And the footprint for this street closer is exactly the same as it was for last year. It's the same that I've used for the extravaganza in the past. It goes from B Street to E Street, and then we closed C Street from the alley to across the railroad tracks to Third Street. So, um, but like I said, and we also decreased the time on this event. Instead of going from 4 to 8, we're going from 4 to 7, because we found out at 7 o'clock, it kind of died down anyway. So, but like I said, it, we're anticipating 1,000 kids, not 5,000 people, so.
I wrote the correction on my slide. Thank you.
Yeah, what day of the week is that?
It's on Saturday. It is a Saturday before, um, Halloween, and it does not conflict with the city's, um, trick or treat event. We try not to do that anymore. Um, but like I said, it's a Saturday. It goes from 4 to 7. Um, the, we start setting up around, um, 2:00 in the afternoon, give the businesses a couple hours and stuff to get ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers?
I don't have any.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Hello, council members. Um, so the teen center is open until 9:00 PM twice a month. And the teens have coined, um, these evenings after hours by the tower. And we would love to host outdoor movie nights on a regular basis. Um, so we're requesting funds, um, for quality movie equipment, so that this is an event that we can, um, continue to, to have, um, on a regular basis. So many of our teens come from low-income homes, and they can't afford to go to movies. Um, they have created really strong friendships at the teen center, and they would really appreciate, um, these movie nights in a safe space that they consider home. So I thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Sarah, is the, so this is to fund the, hopefully the movie night for a, a season, right? And this is just, not just a one night, this is from spring through fall?
Well, possibly for many years to come, yeah. So the screen, projector, seating, you know, of course, in the future, we'll have to supply our own snacks, but.
Right, those are ongoing, but the, but just the seed money for the equipment, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I, Sarah, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Um, it, it, don't get me wrong, I just want to put this out there, the $3,000 is not an issue for me. My question though is, is, um, for, I guess it's twofold. And I asked this earlier of our staff, if whether the Parks and Rec Department already has that equipment, and the answer is no. Um, but they, it sounds like they work through a third party to make that work. Um, I would say that if we can do any kind of partnering there, maybe explore that. And again, it's, it's not really about the, about the money. It's about, uh, you know, being efficient and trying to get things done, uh, in that fashion. So, um, I would just ask maybe in the next couple of weeks if, if the Parks and Rec Director could at least reach out. And if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. It's, it's not a big deal, but I thought that that might be an option.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes, um, my presentation. Again, we'll come back April 18th to return to ask for direction on it, which you would like to move forward. Any question?
I have one question. I was copied on an email regarding the banners for, uh, the Old Galt Festival, and I didn't know if that was included in the amount that's in here. I don't know if any, but he can answer that. It didn't have a price tag on it, but I see that the festival in here, but the banner thing was sent separate.
So the banner, uh, project with the Old Galt Festival is not included in our application, and that's because in the past, when we did the red, white, and blue banner program, um, we just reached out to the city manager directly, and he gave us his blessing. Um, and we kind of went from there. I don't feel, I guess the banner hanging was an in-kind donation, um, that you guys just did. Uh, we did shoot out an email like we did in the past to the city manager and council members, asking if we could get that blessing to do the street banners again. Um, we do have chamber members that have, uh, said that they will volunteer their time to hang the banners. They are licensed, they are bonded, and, um, like certified in that type of activity. Um, so if you guys gave us your blessing, we would need nothing from you other than, yes, you can hang banners and, you know, maybe provide the documentation or information for who would be hanging them. Um, if you guys feel it's more appropriate that the city hangs them, then we would like to probably add that to this application and, you know, sort out the dollar amount associated with that.
I guess I, I just lacked the historical knowledge. I wasn't real clear on what the ask was. Is that something that Director Selling would, uh, coordinate?
Yeah, uh, council member, in the past, uh, the Public Works Department has hung the banners, and I believe that there was an estimated cost per banner that was done. The challenge we have right now is, you saw on the ARPA item before, we've, uh, purchased a new bucket truck, but unfortunately, due to supply chain issues, it won't be here till next year. So we don't have a bucket truck right now. Uh, this is something that I can explore with HR Director as far as the risk management aspect of it. And, you know, we can get the information from, uh, whoever it is you're proposing to use, and maybe we can work that out. Uh, if not, we would need to determine what the cost would be and then, uh, work, work through the details of that, I would say.
Madison, can, how many banners are we talking about? It's not the same as the other program, right?
Yeah, it's not the same as in the past. In the past, I think we did like a couple hundred or a hundred, between 100 and 200. Um, for this one, it's an exclusive, 50 banners only, primarily down C Street and on Lincoln Way. Um, and we would hope to get them up, um, July, and then keep them for a year.
Thanks. Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions?
Yeah, very quick. Uh, Mr. Selling, uh, I know that there is a cost for 22, the road closure was much different than, uh, 23, right?
Correct, yeah. As we kind of touched on, there were no equipment or, um, materials included in the 22 costs.
Yes, I, I, I see that report, but then the report said staff was directed to provide full cost. Who directed you?
I would have to check with staff. I don't know, uh, you, do you have any information on that, Armando, or when they were asking for estimates? So we'd have to check with staff, probably to determine how.
Okay, just check back, because if we're not doing what, why, I just want to know why was the reason we including that much cost, uh, this year. Uh, the other thing I'm going to ask Ms. Garcia, did we have a golf cart in-house, right? Okay, thank you. And that's it.
Anybody else?
Just the last minute about, we talked prior item, that, um, I'd like to see the 66,000, or I guess it's 70 now, is really, whatever. Maybe split in two pieces and so we could maybe, half of that could be available for this time and maybe half for next year? That's kind of what we talked about. That's what I'd like to see as part of this discussion, right? I don't know if that has to happen now, or wait till we approve the vents to have that, or what? I don't know.
Probably come with the approval.
So when the approval comes back, it'll have that new.
Whatever budget amendment is needed for the financials, right, Lorenzo? City Manager?
Yeah, the ARPA dollars will remain untouched until council expends them. And then when we bring that plan back, the council can make that designation.
Excellent. If there's nothing else, we will move on to communication?
None this evening.
Okay, no communication. Uh, city clerics report, none this evening. Uh, comments by staff?
Yes, I, uh, just wanted to let, um, the public know that the cities, the city staff, myself and the staff, will be presenting two, uh, state-of-the-city public forums at the end of April. Uh, we will be doing one forum at Galt High. We will be doing one forum at, uh, Liberty Ranch. Uh, these forums are intended to get the state-of-the-city message out to the folks who are working during the day. And so those forums will be starting at 6:00 PM and running until 7:30. And so again, we'll hold them on both sides of the city and, um, invite public to attend and comment about, um, things that are going on with the city. Again, all a part of our ongoing effort to engage the public. Um, Director Solis, any comments? Sure. Well done, sir. Mr. Boring? All righty, thank you. Mr. Hoffman? Another scintillating presentation. Thank you, Director Hoffman.
Mr. Ho, I have a question for Craig. Actually, maybe it's.
Okay, let's, uh, let's, let's hear from Councilmember Farmer.
Maybe it's not for Craig, but for Tina. I was noticing, somebody was asking about the planning commission meeting, which is Thursday, right? It's not on the city calendar. It's not even on the calendar, nor is it listed under meetings on the, when you scroll down on page one. So. Well, it wasn't even on, I looked all the way into April and it was, or all the way into May, and it's not listed anywhere. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hoffman, uh, that is a high-density project, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then you know how many unit to be in acre, how many total unit on that project is coming in? Thank you.
Director Selling?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, uh, provide a follow-up. There were some comments, I think, at the last council meeting as far as the weeds. And yeah, the sun has been out lately, which is good to see, but that causes things to grow. And from those comments a couple of weeks ago, uh, we've already initiated efforts to get some bid prices. Does the council may remember, I think it was, it's like I lost my connection there. Uh, it was last September that the council approved the litter abatement worker, and part of the scope of work for that person was to do some, uh, weed abatement. There were also a couple of springs, uh, that were budgeted and approved by council. So we're hopeful to get a vendor, uh, going on that soon. Uh, but, uh, just wanted to let you know that, uh, we're on it. So that's all I got. Thanks.
I saw him out there today, Mike. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
He was out there weeding the medians, right? I, yeah. So I was pleased. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Police chief, Kalinowski.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just one item for update. As you've probably seen on our social media or Galt Connect, we are taking applications for a six-week Citizens Academy that staff will be running at the police department, starting on April 12. We only have, um, it's limited to 20. We only have a couple more spaces left. So we would encourage folks to either get on the city website or look for our posting that'll come out tomorrow and provide a link to get signed up to participate in, um, in that event. It's scheduled in such a way not to con, conflict with the city's one that was started by Mr. Hines, um, this last year. So we look forward to this. It was an initiative started by Officer Little. Um, and there's many folks in the department, as you do know how we operate, participating to make this a successful program for our department. And so we look forward to it. Thank you.
That concludes staff comments.
Thank you. Uh, comments by city council members, future agenda items, Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the staff, give us a good report. Thank you for your good work. Uh, thank you for the public. Uh, thank you for the public comment in person. Thank you for the public comment on the phone. Uh, I, last week, I attended safety committee meeting. Uh, there are a lot of things we discuss. Uh, there is, uh, something discussed on 99 Off-Ramp. Uh, thank you, Mike Selling. He did a very good explanation, uh, to the safety committee. Uh, they also bring that, uh, issue, the unhoused and, uh, uh, safety, uh, near schools. Uh, thank you, Chief, for your explanation. I have the opportunity to speak with the group of our boy scout and their parents at Lake Canyon last week in, uh, Lake Canyon Elementary School. Uh, we discussed various topics and how they can be more involved in the city. And I, I asked them to involve in a, a youth commission and that kind of meeting. And it's also, they brought that excellent question, same question, was unhoused and the safety. Uh, thank you, Chief, for, you give me the knowledge, so I could explain to them how we will work on the unhoused and, uh, uh, the other topic. Uh, the past Saturday, I attended both Saturday Market and Galt. Both events were well-retained. Uh, lots of vendors, weather was very good. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Papano.
Thank you all for the hard work, and thanks to everybody that, uh, showed up and took part in the meeting. And I've heard myself talk more than enough tonight.
Councilman Farmer?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, uh, just want to thank everybody who spoke tonight, public comment. Although, um, you know, there's a lot of different opinions. I do hear them all and factor them in and give them all a lot of thought. And, uh, I wanted to thank the people, although most of them are gone, I think, uh, the folks from Galt Place for their bravery and speaking. I know it took a lot for them to be willing to do that. Uh, and then, uh, thank you to Parks and Rec for a good Saturday Market. Armando was great. It was well-attended. I had a good time. So thank you, Jackie, and, uh, all your other staff. I can't name them all, but they know who they are. And thank you, Public Works, for your participation in that. I know it's a joint effort. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, just want to close out one last thing. Uh, with the talk of the Galt Place, I would like to see if, we can see if our city manager, possibly our city attorney, could reach out. I know you've had some dialogue with the owner, but I don't know what the, what, to what end. I was never updated. So I don't know if these issues were discussed or for some other issues, but obviously, if you were discussing, I don't know if it could, you know, but.
We are pursuing these issues.
Okay.
Part of this effort was for them to come and speak with you tonight. I have met with the owner of Galt Place. We are moving through these issues. This is a county, um, the county has the leverage here. So I will be following up with, um, supervisors, Supervisor Humes, Chief of Staff, um, in the next couple of days, and we'll find out where things are. I mean, Mr. Valier, met with him, them a couple of weeks ago. And so this is, this is an ongoing effort, uh, between my office and trying to settle these issues. So we've been on this for the last three months.
All right, well, I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to reiterate, though, it's that, you know, there was certain guidelines with that project, and it was, and, you know, just, I just want to make, I just, I don't want the city to just be like, hey, it's not our gig, you know, county's going to have to whatever, because that's what they've been told for several years, and it doesn't seem to.
That's not what we're trying to do.
Okay.
We're trying to make sure we meet with them. Um, I get briefings weekly on things that are going on in Galt Place. Uh, so I'm fully aware of the things that are going on there. I'm just trying to make sure that we can remedy those things and stay within the bounds of our authority.
Sure. Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, I attended, uh, with Councilman Papano, a Sunshine Food Pantry Empty Bowls Dinner on the 25th, and it was very well-attended. In fact, um, in fact, I think we were all there. Um, it, very well-attended and, um, really, um, excited to see the community rally around, uh, a program that has flourished over the last couple of years and. that has flourished over the last couple of years. Supervisor Hume provided his services as an auctioneer, and did a pretty good job with that, so. Also, on Tuesday, the 28th, I attended the Sacramento County Prevention Summit, and this was put on by the Sacramento Coalition, County Coalition for Youth, Office of Education and Sacramento County. And I came across it in meeting with a citizen on the marijuana dispensary subject, and she reached out, and then, as we were meeting, she told me about this, this free seminar. And so I went, and they, there were several topics, but mainly, they talked about effects of drug on youth and brain development, dispensaries in Colorado, 10 years, and what they've learned from it, and then THC drug products offered in Colorado dispensaries, and their potency compared to years past. It wasn't necessarily totally reflective of what California is doing, but I think it was a good opportunity to learn from a place that's had this issue going on for some time, and so they had some data sets that were pretty good. Also, attended the Cal City Sacramento Valley Division meeting up in the city of Calusa, which is a small city up in the county of Calusa. We did a tour of the historic area, and really envisioned there what we have here. And so it was interesting in talking to them about how they bring people to them, and it's not necessarily through events or anything like that, it's kind of an ongoing effort, marketing effort, very similar to what we've been talking about tonight. And so I think there's some things to learn there. They do a lot of pooling resources and getting the most bang for their buck, and that's kinda their focus. So anyhow, did that. And then the extravaganza on the first, it was well-attended, many families were out there. The youth commission had a large raffle, and as a fundraiser, that was pretty, pretty good. And then lastly, we, the mayor and I attended separately the A to Z Foundation Dinner in Lodi. There are many people from Galt there, and live auction and silent auction items that went on and on and on. Kinda like me talking, Madison and I were talking about it today, I didn't realize how many items they had, and then at some point, I realized that they had a booklet on the table that you can look at, at every, that you could see the live auction items, and I was like, oh my gosh. Anyhow, it was very well-attended, and the organization last year donated $3,000 to three different nonprofits in our, in our community, and so I suspect that they'll be doing the same, and our youth commission helped with serving and cleaning tables, so. That is all I have, and I look forward to the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, sir. So I wrote down a couple notes about Galt Place and stuff, so there's no policies that we should review or anything like that. I just wanna touch base on that real quick, not to hammer it to death or anything.
We're gonna pursue it. Again, the key is to stay within the bounds of our authority.
Okay.
Because if we don't, we invite a lawsuit.
Yeah, you already addressed a couple of things I had written down, so it was just disheartening to hear, as you're well aware.
Yes.
I really appreciate the public comment. The Fourth Street Market was, I spent a few hours down there, it was really good to see the sunshine, it was a little cool, but it was just really welcome, seemed like an excellent success, and I look forward to it in the coming months. I also attended the empty bowl, which was done really well. For the A to Z Foundation in Lodi, you know, the youth commission, thank you so much, the youth commission for helping to serve, they just cleared tables and kept things moving, so to speak. The person that organized that came to the youth commission last night and stated that they grossed $100,000 on that fundraiser. So, yes, I agree with Mr. Lozano that it felt like they were squeezing us a little bit by the time they got to the end of the evening. They will net about 65,000 to 70,000, so, you know, if you look into fundraise, squeeze on, I guess. Also attended the extravaganza, it was really nice, it was, seemed fairly well-attended too. It was also very nice on like a spring day to see kids playing and flying kites, et cetera. And with that, I will end the meeting at 10:26. Good night.